Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use permit requests, and to review appeals from the decision of the staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance, and to then make decisions in such matters. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here and I'll introduce our board as well as city staff members that are supporting today's hearing. On the audience's right is John Chido. Next to him is Dave Gare. Next to him is Lynn Carlson. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. Next to me is Marla Jones. And arriving shortly will be Nathan Blake. We're just missing one member today, Cindy Smith. I'll introduce our city staff. City legal counsel also arriving shortly to my left will be Glenna Frank. And down here in the front row, we have Bert Droste, city planner, Catherine Dostart, city planner, Eric Lundie, city planner, and also good to see Sue Ann Donovan, the city's zoning enforcement officer. I'll go ahead and go through our procedure here. For some of you, this may be the first time you're in front of us. You may hope it's the only time you're in front of us, but we'll go through and help you along with the process here today. This is an open, public meeting. However, it is a formal hearing. This is a legal procedure. It is being recorded. In fact, we should be broadcasting live now on the city's cable channel for those watching us live or in reruns late at night. Copies of the agenda and the staff recommendations are available in the tray right outside the door here, so when I'm through with my opening remarks, if you want to step up and grab a copy of the agenda, if you don't have one, feel free to do so. This board is required to base its decision in each case upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the requested relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the relief. Each appeal will be announced in the order as presented on the agenda. Staff will first give a brief explanation of the appeal. Any written comments received by the staff prior to the hearing will be distributed to the board or otherwise identified during the staff presentation. The appellant or a representative of the appellant will then be allowed to speak first. They will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Anyone then present in support of the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. Anyone present in opposition to the appeal will then be allowed up to five minutes each for their comments. If there are comments in opposition, the applicant will then be allowed up to three minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments. All speakers are requested to speak only from the podium at the front left of the room here and to begin their presentation by giving both their name and address. If you're here in a professional capacity as an architect, engineer, or an attorney, you can use your place of business address. If you're here as a resident or property owner, please give that address. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. And I do want to reinforce this, we have a pretty busy agenda today. Everybody will be given enough time to give a fair shake on their view on these items, but I will hold you to our time limitations. So again, appellant has 10 minutes, and if you're here to speak for or against something, you've got up to five minutes. So we want to keep to that so we can get through our agenda today. Once all comments have been provided, the board will then close further public comment on the agenda item. The board will then immediately deliberate the quest, request, and we will make a decision here today. If your appeal is approved, we ask that you wait until next Wednesday to go to the permit and development center if you would need to obtain any necessary building permits. This will allow the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will be provided to you as well as to appropriate city departments and permit staff. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision of this board, or such approval shall expire. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is the first portion of the agenda that you see here, we will not plan to individually discuss those items, and they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless there's an individual present here today or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. And we'll help you through this consent portion of the agenda here in just a minute. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation must become a permanent part of the record and will not be returned. So if you have any photos, or blueprints, or drawings that you want to present as part of your case, you'll either have to give those to staff for the record or be prepared to provide suitable copies. For housekeeping items, we ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to not be disruptive or distracting from the hearing that is in progress, and you're doing a fine job of that. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. So far, so good, thank you. And if you need to use the restroom, you can leave through the door here. Stay to the right of the stairs, and there are restrooms on your left. Once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you are welcome to leave the hearing. We'll also have a 10-minute break in the hearing around 3:00 to 3:30, if that's needed. So, let's take a look at our agenda. Bert, do we have any changes to our printed agenda, items 1 through 22?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Droste, planner for the city. The only changes I'm going to have to the agenda are that items 3, 4, and 6 need to be discussed rather than heard on the consent agenda. These three items, number 3 at 4510 Fluor Drive, number 4 at 1010 13th Street, and number 6 at 511 58th Street. The applicants don't agree to the conditions recommended by staff, so they need to be, so staff is moving them to the discussion portion of the agenda. And then I did have one slight change to the staff recommendation on item number 7, which is the appeal from Rick Madden at 2406 Elizabeth Avenue. We've just reworded the condition of number, or the condition number 7 to, as is here on the screen.
And you believe, is applicant okay with your change for item 7?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, excellent. Okay, and no withdrawals?
No withdrawals, no.
Okay. So what I'm going to do here, that would leave the items 1 and 2, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10 on the agenda. I'm going to read through those item addresses quickly. The items I'm going to read here, we would be looking to approve those requested permits or variances or exceptions so long as they meet the staff recommendations. But if you would be in opposition to any of these approvals that I'm going to list, please raise your hand, and then we'll go ahead and take that off the consent agenda, and we'll hear it as part of the regular hearing and get your testimony. So if anybody's in opposition to what I'm going to read here, please raise your hand. Item 1 would be a variance request for Savannah Homes at 4320 East 46th Street. Is there anybody here in opposition to approving item 1? Raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Okay, item 2, same thing, an exception request at 412 East Jackson Street. Any opposition to that? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. And again, we're going to hear 3 and 4 in the regular agenda. Item 5 would be an exception request at 5611 Southwest 2nd Street. We're looking to approve that. Is there any opposition to item 5? Ma'am, do you have your hand up? Are you opposed? Okay, so you are the applicant, and you're not agreeing to the conditions. Okay, so we'll go ahead and hear item 5. Alright, item 7 would be an exception request vicinity of 2406 Elizabeth Avenue. Any opposition to that? Please raise your hand if so. Seeing none. Item 8 would be an amendment to a special permit for Southridge Mall vicinity of 1111 East Army Post Road. Any opposition to that? Seeing none. Item 9 would be a special permit for Stowe Elementary School at 1411 East 33rd Street. Item 10, a special permit for a place of worship at 2920 30th Street. Any opposition to that? You're here in opposition, sir? The information would be contained in the staff report, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at that yet as part of the agenda. That would all be printed out. It would say what they want to do and what the relief is that they are requesting. And I don't want to really pause here so we can take time to read, but Glenna, do you have any advice on that one?
One suggestion is that it be pulled from the consent agenda, and then if it gets to the time where it's time for that hearing, it can always be just approved without discussion.
Alright, so if you want to take a few minutes to read up on that, if you do have concerns between agenda items, you can talk to staff, and if they can't help you with that, then we'll go ahead and hear it later on.
That, or we could also go back to this gentleman before you vote on the consent as well.
Okay, alright, yeah, go ahead and take a read there. Okay, so that would be item 10. So that would end our consent agenda, and we pulled item 5. So that would leave items 1, 2, 7, 8, and 9. So let's go ahead and vote on those for the moment. Would there be a motion to approve items 1, 2, 7, 8, and 9 from the board? Motion by Lynn?
Second.
Second by Marla. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carries. So if you were here for items 1, 2, 7, 8, or 9, those have been approved, and this time next week, staff will have that approval in the form of a decision and order, which you'll get a copy of. So, for those that you were here for 1, 2, 7, 8, 9, you are free to leave. Thank you for coming in. Okay. Alright, what we're going to go ahead here is, we will go ahead then and look at item 3, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so item 3 is an exception request at 4510 Fluor Drive, and we'll have Catherine kick us off with a summary.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Catherine Dostart, planner for the City of Des Moines. The property that we are looking at is 4510 Fluor Drive. The appellant has requested to build a accessory dwelling in the rear of their property, and it's a little bit larger than they're allowed to build. They have an allowance of 1,000 square feet, and they want to build 1,440 square feet, so they're a little bit over, but it's an exception level request. Here's an image of the property from the front. It's a little bit of a difficult property, so I don't have any images from the back, but we do have an aerial view, and they are proposing to build a 30-foot by 48-foot garage, and then you can see the rear property here, and they're well within their setbacks. So, they did provide us with a couple of images that give us some idea of what's going on with the proposed building. And then they have told us that they're planning to store antiques in this building. There's just a couple of elevation, oblique elevations, and then we've got two cards, or excuse me, two properties to the south are in favor. The appellant is purchasing the property on contract, and so two of our cards include one from Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association, and then the property owner, as you can see that they are purchasing from. Staff is recommending approval, but we do have our standard conditions with that, namely, the one that I believe the appellant is having some issue with is just that we will be asking for our standard, where we ask for compatible building materials such as horizontal lap siding and asphalt shingles, and my understanding is that the appellant is proposing a metal pole barn. So, if you have any questions for me, I can answer them, or we can let the appellant take it.
Any questions for Catherine? Okay, alright. Okay, so the way this part of the hearing works, the appellant has up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for their request for their appeal. So whoever the appellant is, come on up. Good afternoon, sir. We just need your name, address, and then you've got up to 10 minutes.
Okay. Garland Hoffman, 4510 Fluor Drive, Des Moines, Iowa. I just wanted to build a metal building if possible because of the maintenance, and it'll last a lot longer, and I'd like to have it 1,440 square foot if possible, and that's about all.
Okay, alright. And normally Garland, if you were building the building within the appropriate size limitation, you would be allowed to do that.
Okay.
So this becomes a little bit of what I call quid pro quo. If you want a little variance here, the city's going to say, hey, this building's a little bigger than what's normally allowed, so in order to kind of minimize its impact, can you kind of dress it up to make it fit in a little bit better with the primary structure?
Okay.
I think that's the reasoning. That's something that I know that I would be interested in seeing usually.
So don't use metal, is that what you're saying?
Well, that's why staff has put that in there as their recommendation. The board doesn't necessarily have to agree with that.
Well, either way.
Yeah. Now, I do see you've got some pretty tall doors there, up to a 14-foot overhead door.
Right.
Now you say storing antiques. Are we talking about vehicles, or are we talking about like antique pots and pans?
Well, furniture, and I mean, I have a lot of stuff.
Okay.
So I just, I just thought if I made it like that, then I wouldn't have to ever make another one, is my plan, so.
So with a 14-foot door, then you can back the biggest truck possible in there to unload? Is that the idea?
I think that. Did I put 14, or I was thinking?
Well, I thought, I thought I saw that on the quick deal, but I was just trying to get an idea of what you're talking about.
Maybe 12-foot door, you know, and then I have to stay under 17-foot total.
For total height, right.
Yeah, maybe I did put that up there, but yeah, it'd be fine at 12, or.
Okay. Yeah, so we got, it looks like the two of the doors, or are they 14-foot wide by 10-foot tall?
Oh, that's what they are, they're 10-foot tall.
They're 10-foot tall doors. Okay, 12, and a 14, and a 14. Gotcha.
Okay, yeah, they're 10-foot tall, I'm sorry.
Alright, yeah. So otherwise we're semi.
That's pretty tall.
Okay. No proposal for windows in the building to kind of break up the siding?
Probably not.
Okay.
I mean, unless you, unless you want them in there. I have another question, though. Can you put an awning on the front of that, or is that?
Well, you'd have to meet building code and discuss that with the building staff, yeah.
No big deal. But you can put concrete in front of it? Concrete?
There's, there's requirements for, I think, a minimum amount of that, yeah. And again, you'd have to follow that with your building permit requirements.
Sounds good.
Yep. Anything else you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, any questions?
Unless you want windows, I mean, I can put them in there, it doesn't matter.
Well, we can have a discussion here and we'll see.
If you want them, we'll put them in.
Okay. Any questions for Garland?
I have a question. I don't have a neighborhood here in this. This is on an alley, then?
No.
No, this is not an alley.
No alleys, yeah.
What are the buildings like that surround you? Are they?
The one, the one that's next to me to the north is almost, it's a lawyer's office. It's probably, I would guess, 40 by 200. It's all building. So, yep.
How about across the street from you? What's across the street?
Panera Bread, Walgreens, Hy-Vee, so yeah.
There isn't any visibility from Fluor Drive. Is that, is that correct? You would not be able to see the structure from Fluor Drive?
Nope, you wouldn't, because it goes through.
You wouldn't be able to see the structure from Stanton?
No.
You wouldn't be able to see the structure from McKinley?
No. Well, I mean, maybe the roof, you know.
I mean, it's tucked back, there's nothing, I didn't even know really there was a...
About 10-foot from where they would let me build the building, there's sewer there, so there's not ever going to be an alley or nothing.
Yeah. It's horse pasture, right?
Yeah, you wouldn't even, probably even know it was there.
Yeah. Because right behind your lot's a horse pasture, is that correct? Or apartments there, is that back up?
There's apartments back there, yeah.
But it's quite a ways from your back lot line?
Yes, yeah.
Covered by a tree line?
Yeah.
And Garland, this is a commercially zoned district, but is this a single-family home?
This is where I'm going to live.
And this is where you live? Okay, alright, this is your house, okay?
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, any other questions for Garland? Okay, thank you, sir. You can go ahead and sit down.
Appreciate it.
Okay, is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Hey, seeing none, is there anybody here to, are you here to speak in support? Come on up. You can have up to five minutes. We just need your name and address for the record, and again, you've got up to five minutes.
Okay, I'm Garland Hoffman Jr. for 4510 Fluor Drive. The biggest reason we're trying to put the metal building up is, like my dad said, for the, for the maintenance purposes of it. I've had garages before with regular siding and animals beat it up, you know, woodpeckers peck at it, stuff, you know, and it's just a lot less maintenance and longevity on the building. That's the, that's the biggest reason we would like to put a metal pole building back there, so.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, anybody here to speak in opposition? We can call it that?
Chair members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the City of Des Moines. I just had a conversation this morning with a resident of that area who is very upset with his property values and the property values in the area, and wants upgrades to the stock of housing and commercial buildings. He was quite upset with the way Fluor Drive and Stanton area looks, so I would argue that this building should meet the character of the neighborhood and try and get some increased value and have it meet the character of the house, so that we're starting to upgrade the area rather than allow it to be used as a commercial storage unit on a lot on Fluor Drive. So I would argue for the upgrades to the building and have it meet the staff's recommendations.
And Sue Ann, while you're here, although this is a C2, since the use of the property is residential, would this owner be allowed to like rent out spaces back here and all that?
No.
It would have to be considered an accessory to his use, so no home occupation, no renting storage space?
Correct. If he's going to do home occupation, then we need to look at the conversion of the buildings to a home occupation.
Okay. And it didn't sound like he was proposing that. It sounded like these were all private possessions, but I just wanted to verify that.
I think it just goes to the, the argument of, yeah, you want to store things in there, but let's have a building that looks good and meets the character of the neighborhood and upgrades the tax value and the pride in the neighborhood rather than having a Morton building.
Yep. Okay, alright, thank you very much. Okay, since we had some opposition from staff themselves, Garland, you've got an opportunity to have up to three minutes for any closing comments or rebuttal if you want to. If you've said your piece, that's okay too. You good?
I think we'll upgrade the value, and I'm not going to rent out spaces that are good.
Okay, alright, alright. Okay, alright, thank you very much. Alright, we'll go ahead and close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Thoughts among the board?
I'm thinking about the questions that John asked about, you can't see it from anywhere, so that is changing my minds a little bit from what I was thinking off, off the front, and then we also take into context that's surrounded mainly by commercial. Fluor is, is a entrance to the area, so I'm okay with doing a metal building because it sounds like it might be appropriate, it's a treat area with moisture issues, but I think we can dress it up a little bit and make it look a little bit nicer, maybe with some doors, some windows, landscaping, I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
If you wanted to do that, you'd have to look at proposing that as, as a motion.
But right now, we're just talking, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, yeah.
Okay.
The only concern I have at one point, they're going to develop all that land. That would be west of that property and south of that property towards the airport, toward McKinley. You know, Sue Ann does bring up a good point, but right now, there's nothing other than the apartments that back up off of Stanton. I mean, you really wouldn't even know it's there at this point, but at some point, that land would, I would assume, be developed.
Yep. Any other thoughts?
I don't feel super strongly about it, but I, I'm convinced by their argument that with longevity, you can't see it from floor, Stanton, I think that's fine. I'd be fine moving it along without the requirement that staff has recommended.
I might suggest if folks were inclined to grant some relief here on allowing the metal stuff, that maybe we do look at some windows or some doors, because again, this is supposed to be an accessory structure, and it's still pretty sizable. Obviously, it's larger than what's allowed, so there's still going to be some visual and physical impact by it just being there, and we're probably not talking about a very big expense to build this to begin with. Usually, I don't ask about money, but it's laying right there. You know, this is not a substantial investment in the property, so I think it could be dressed up a bit. If it's going to have a very long lifespan, some extra investment could help it fit better into that area character. Fluor Drive is an important corridor to our city. To me, every block and every street is important, but I sure want to make sure that we're going to have something that's going to be here 50, 75 years from now, that it truly will fit in to the character of the neighborhood now and in the future. But I'm open, if anybody wants to put a motion out there, we can see where it goes.
I'll make a motion for staff. Let's just add some windows. Looks like he's got a door on the one end already.
But if you make a motion for staff, they...
I mean, I'm sorry, not for staff.
Okay.
Just let, let, build a metal building, let's add some windows.
Okay. Okay. Do you want like two on the back side, one on each side of minimum area? City requires, what, two by three at a minimum?
Yeah.
Is that right? Something like that with the appropriate flashing and trim?
Exactly.
Okay. I think we have some standard language on that. You want to make that a motion?
Sure, thanks.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to grant the requested relief subject to the addition of windows on the, at least two windows on the back side and one window on each short side of the building to meet city minimum requirements for window design and construction, something to that effect.
As, as well as the three other conditions, right?
Yes, and the three other existing conditions, yes. So we would just be scrapping...
Two.
Two, correct?
Yeah.
Alright, good point, Nathan.
We meant two.
Okay. So, all those in favor of granting the requested exception relief, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nothing wrong with that. Okay, motion carries five to one then. Okay, you got a metal building, but dress it up just to shade. Okay. Yep, you bet. Okay. For our next item, then that will bring us then to item number four, which is an exception request for ten, ten, Thirteenth Street. Thanks, guys.
I think these are from a different one.
Alright, what do we got going here? We're going to have to cut to a commercial break here.
Full sign?
So, the subject property is just north of the freeway, located at the this is in the Cheatham Park neighborhood area, south of Laurel Street. So, Fourteenth dead ends was dead-ended back when the freeway occurred. Thirteenth turned into a street called Day Street that runs east. So, there's some parcels here that have limited frontage but are up against the interstate freeway. Quickly give you some photos of it as you're going. That's looking to the northwest. That's looking straight west. And then more to the south, I believe. What the applicant is proposing is to build on the northern portion of the lot, and if you can see that crosshatching on there, that is a fairly sizable limitation to the property because of public sanitary sewer that runs through there. Those require an easement that's thirty foot on center, so a lot of the property is eaten up with is eaten up with not being able to build on, I should say. So, they're pretty limited in where they can build. It is zoned R3, so they are able to put a two-family unit on this, and that's what they're proposing to do. This is some examples of the architecture that are proposed. What you're seeing there is kind of basic in its form. Mostly, the actual finishes and materials they would have to show you or demonstrate to you if you're concerned about those. So, staff is proposing that we approve the exception to allow the closer front yard setback. I think there's the practical difficulty because of the limitations of the easement. But on the other hand, we also want to make sure that the character of what is built fits the neighborhood, and so we are recommending the conditions. I believe the condition that the appellant is going to challenge is the recommendation in number two on page eleven, which would be that it have a full basement. And again, this is coming from, through our Plan DSM process where what we've determined is that basements add future value and buildings and homes that have basements appreciate better over time. Also, it has to do with storage, the necessity of storage. We have a throughout Des Moines, we have a housing stock that didn't contemplate the needs of storage historically that we demand now. So, when we build new, we want to make sure that we're building to allow adequate storage. So, one of the things basements do is also provide storage. So, there's kind of a two-pronged reason why staff consistently recommends that these infill properties have basements. There's always exceptions when we know there's water table issues or issues with making the sanitary sewer service work with a gravity. There's going to be some of those situations where basement isn't possible, but in this case, we think it's possible, so. We do want to make sure that it either has a detached garage or a storage shed. I don't know if they're fighting that. We want to make sure that the exterior exterior materials are brick, vinyl of the durable thickness, cedar, cement, fiberboard, or other composite materials. All, any dwelling shall have not less than sixty square feet or a porch or a third of the front facade being brick. It looks like they're going with the porch option here with what they're proposing to fit into the character of the area. Any dwelling unit, we'd want to have the wider nominal trim of four inches. And we want the roof to be architectural-type shingle material. And any dwelling should be constructed in compliance with the building codes, so. Those are pretty consistent conditions that we ask for on one and two-family infills when they come in front of the board, so. Any questions about that?
Is there, the water table in this area, there hasn't been?
I'm not aware that of being an issue. This sits a little higher than the freeway. And in terms of it feeding with the sanitary sewer, I don't think that's going to be an issue either. If that's demonstrated to us, usually we acquiesce and say, yeah, you know, basement really isn't a reasonable option here. That's not the case at this point.
Any other questions for Eric? Okay? And Eric, was that also your your comment map, yea or nay there? There was just the one card there?
Yep, sorry. So, the subject property was the only one we got, so there isn't anything that would be covered up on that.
Alright. Thank you.
But the shaded are the ones that we did notify.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and turn it over to the applicant. You've got up to ten minutes. Just need your name and address to kick us off.
Alright, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, my name is Kurt Carlson. I volunteer with an organization called JAPA. And JAPA is based at one hundred and eighteenth Southeast First Street here in Southeast Fourth Street, rather, here in Des Moines. So, just a little background, JAPA is a nonprofit organization based here in Des Moines, and their mission is to end homelessness. So, what we're trying to accomplish with these homes is to provide some affordable rental housing. It may help somebody that's homeless today graduate into an affordable rental situation, or it may keep like a veteran or an elderly person from falling into homelessness. That's the biggest area of homelessness today is when people are on fixed incomes and they struggle to meet the rising rental rates. So, we intend to rent these properties at a rate of about five fifty per month. Average rental rate in Des Moines is eight fifty a month for a one-bedroom place. As we talked about, what we're proposing here is a duplex. Let's see. I think it was on one of these other sheets. It's not here right now. I've got a copy right here. Is it? Ah, here we go. Very good, so. Here's a site plan that was put together by Snyder Engineering. Snyder is based in Ankeny, and they do an awful lot of work here in Des Moines. What you can see highlighted in yellow is the front setback is the only dimension that we're struggling with. We're proposing a twenty-foot setback. What's required is a thirty-foot setback. You can see two units, as mentioned, they're four hundred and eighty square feet each, so rather small. This would be our second and third units. Here is an example of a house we just built earlier this year at thirteen oh five Laurel. So, it's less than a block away from this particular site. Our objective here is to put together a really high-quality unit, but small and square footage to make it affordable for rent. I thought you might like to see the inside of the house. It was done by a professional interior designer. What you see is quartz cabinets, you see a lot of windows. It's open, it's airy. You see, there's vaulted ceilings, ceiling fans. So, it's really a pleasant place to live, and that's what we're proposing is that two families would be able to very effectively live in these duplexes. Here's an example of what the bedroom looks like. And a door into the bathroom. Let me add to this is we've got a floor plan for each of those units, four hundred and eighty square feet. This is a little bit bigger than the one we just built. This improves the livability. It might allow a family rather than an individual to live here. Let's see, noteworthy, we talked a little bit about some of the materials. What you see is that we are using cement board. We have the four-inch trim that you're looking for. We have the architectural shingles. This design was put together by BSB Architects. They're a professional architecture firm based in West Des Moines, and they cover the nation. So, we're working with some really professional people here. The intent is to build a similar house. And then, let me show you one more view of what this would look like. This is kind of exciting. This property has sat empty for over fifty years. When two thirty-five went through, there were properties condemned, and this lot was put together kind of piecemeal. So, nobody has been able to build on this for over fifty years. We're building some small units, and we're able to use just a slice of the land here and make some good use of this. That helps the city from a tax perspective. We'll have JAPA actually paying taxes on this, where today, you're just getting taxes on empty property. The one concern here would be the basement. And as the additional recommendations came through, we can do all of the recommendations with the exception of a basement. You can see, cost is really key for us, and adding a basement is extra excavation. It's extra concrete. It's extra electrical and lighting work. We would have to put sump pumps in. And then, from a maintenance standpoint, we have to make sure those basements are dry and clean, so just on an ongoing basis, there's a lot of extra cost to a basement. Now, I lived in Texas for thirteen years, and they don't have basements in Texas. So, they've, in tornado country, they've very effectively been able to get by without having basements. So, I would propose that we forego, at least for this property, the idea of having a basement. And I'll pause, any questions?
Oh, Kurt?
I'm just concerned that it's a one-bedroom. And I know the rates, I live on the east side, and I just saw a one-bedroom apartment renting for eight hundred dollars a month that you said it was that size. But what about people with families or a single mother with a kid? Where's the... I'm wanting to see someplace in the basement, even though it's not legal living space. In a pinch, it serves, and I just... I don't know, that's just my thoughts.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've thought of those, and like I said, we are used to basements here. We do have tornadoes, it's also the frost and it helps keep the house warmer and those type of things, so. Those are the reasons for basements besides tornadoes. But have you thought, can you do anything a little bit larger, or?
A little bit larger?
Yeah, just put a second bedroom in there?
The first house that I was showing you was three hundred and eighty-four square feet. And based on that first experience, we felt like we needed to increase a little bit, so we've gone to four hundred and eighty square feet already. It's a pretty significant increase, but it allows us to get the standard appliances rather than custom, small-sized appliances.
Is somebody renting that went on Laurel right now?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And he was homeless two years ago, and today, he's thrilled to be living in such a nice place. He feels incredibly blessed for that opportunity.
So, I imagine, when you were going through the additional costs that come along with adding a basement, it's, given your mission, it seems like it's not just additional cost to you, it means that you're not going to be able to serve the population that you're trying to serve as well because you're going to have to charge them more. And so, it won't be as accessible, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, we would have to increase the rent accordingly to cover the maintenance and the initial investment.
How do you feel about the garage or shed then?
We have plans to put a shed in. The house we built today has a hundred and twenty-square-foot shed in back of it. I question that, for us, somebody that's moved off the street does not have a lot of possessions, and they're thrilled to have three hundred and eighty-four square feet. Recognize that eighty years from now, that may not be the case.
Yeah. No, like I said, there is, as Nathan mentioned, there is a need for the low-income housing, so.
So, Kurt, along with the rental then, who maintains the property? Mows the lawn, trims the hedges, whose job is that?
Good question. So, currently, that's JAPA's responsibility. As we grow, we would evolve towards a more professional organization to do the maintenance. Today, we rely on volunteers. So, we have volunteers that are doing the mowing. We're currently looking for a volunteer to be like a maintenance supervisor.
Sure, sure.
For one house, I'm covering that today.
Right, right. And the only reason I ask is a lot of times, the sheds per unit are helpful if the tenant is going to be doing maintenance, because then they have a place to keep a push mower, snow blower, or things of that nature. But it sounds like you're going to do the property maintenance, is that correct?
That's right, and a team of volunteers, so we're managing that aspect of it.
Okay, I've got you.
That would include mowing, snow removal, just general cleanup.
Okay.
We have an operations manual put together so that we're doing it as professionally as possible.
But you guys feel that generally speaking, you're going to be a long-term owner as a landlord, and you'll be helping people get their feet on the ground with a solid, quality place to live and get reestablished.
Absolutely.
That's the plan for this?
That is square in our strategy. We've got one house already, this is two more. And as we get funding, we intend to continue this initiative throughout Des Moines and other neighborhoods.
Alright.
Yeah.
I have another question. What's the term of leases you're looking for? These months-to-month, or are they six-month leases, year leases?
Right now, it's, the lease is paid monthly.
Okay, but I mean, what's the term? Do they sign a contract, they're going to live there for six months?
Okay.
I'm just worrying about turnover.
Well, so far, our experience is with one. And there's no intention for him to leave right now. He is so thrilled to be there. He's someone that JAPA has partnered with, so JAPA's been really close to this guy for several, for a couple of years. And the future tenants will be the same way, is that there are people that JAPA has helped, and there's a long-term relationship there.
So, you need to be evaluating them on a case-by-case basis, not taking somebody who's going to live there for two months and leave it and they're her mess and...
Oh, I certainly hope not.
Looking for pride of ownership or rentalship, or whatever you want to call it, okay.
For stability. And then, also the community aspect. So, I didn't mention that the Cheatham Park Neighborhood Association is all in favor of this. They see this as elevating their property values. You know, this is a neighborhood that quite honestly could use some help. And we intend to work with building a community around all these homes.
So, Kurt, just one final question I'd have for you here. So, you're okay with the staff recommendation in general, they had eight items. I'm assuming that you'd just like to avoid item two, having a full basement?
Yeah, absolutely. That may be a showstopper for us if we've got to go out and quote a basement.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
You bet. Okay, is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant's request? Alright, welcome. You've got up to five minutes. We just need your name and address.
Thank you, my name is Dave Schwartz. I'm at the same address with JAPA, I'm the CEO of JAPA. And so, I appreciate your time today to, I just wanted to follow up with a couple of items. This is all about a cost issue, okay? We're trying to build quality in the Cheatham Park neighborhood. We established that with the first home, three eighty-four. The neighborhood association president is wildly delighted with this and is looking forward to us doing more Cheatham Parks and neighborhood than he... Neighborhood that needs a little bit of love. On the same block that we built the first home, there's two other boarded-up homes. It's very rare, you build a home of 384 square feet and have neighbors coming to you and saying, "You just helped our property values." So I think we're doing the right thing there. The concrete does take it out of the question, or, excuse me, the basement takes it out of the question, for us to do that. I think the, the question about family versus single-family, or, excuse me, singles versus families, these are really designed for couples, right at this point. If you think about it, the fastest-growing demographic of homeless people are senior citizens, who are trying to get by on a social security payment, and maybe didn't plan appropriately. This gives them an option, and so not only are we trying to take people out of homelessness, but we're also trying to prevent homelessness. This works well in that neighborhood, specifically well in that neighborhood, and by the way, to the other question, these are year leases, so there's not going to be rapid turnover, just so you're aware of that, too. And with that, I'd, I'd stop and entertain any questions that might be there, but we really appreciate you considering this today.
Any questions for Dave? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Anybody else to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? All right, if none, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation.
I think they've done a good job in presenting this. I am usually fond of following the rules and having the full basement, but they have made their argument for the pricing, and I think they're going to maintain good control over it, that they've got it vested interests. I like the one-year lease, and there is definitely a need, because I was just looking at rentals the other day, just happenstance, and, and I know how many, again, starts out paying $1,000 a month of rent. So I am in favor, and I make a motion that we accept staff recommendation with the elimination of number two.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any other comments before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, got a good one, motion carries unanimously, six-zero. All right, keep up the good work, guys. You bet.
Again.
Okay, I'm just going to do one quick piece of business here on that item 10, which we had put on the back burner. I don't know if the gentleman with the concern is still here.
No, I satisfied, satisfied his concern, so he left, so we can go ahead and approve.
Yeah, what I'd like to do, I'm, just as a courtesy to the applicant, then, if they're sitting out here, and I don't want to keep them waiting all day. So, item 10, we're going to go back to that for a moment. Item 10 was on consent agenda, special permit request at 2920 30th Street. Conversion of an existing structure to religious assembly use. Was there anybody in opposition to that, here in the audience? Okay, seeing none, unless there's any further opposition on the board, would there be a motion to grant approval?
I'd like a motion.
All right, motion by Dave, second by Marlaus. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that was just a hanging Chad from the consent agenda, so if the appellant was here for item 10, you've been approved. All right, have a good afternoon. Okay, now we'll go back, then, to item five, an exception request at 5611 Southwest 2nd Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a request to divide up the property that's been in this configuration for quite a long time and used in common. Based on that, dividing it back to something smaller, the way our ordinance is written is it loses that lot of record status. So it, as you see it, it would be considered a lot of record, as it was combined historically. It also, you'll also notice even the original lot that the home sits on has five additional feet from the lot to the north. There's probably a survey correction done historically for that, the lots going north, to fix some encroachments. This is the subject home on the property. And you can see it slopes down back to the east, so that, that eastern portion of the property starts to be a lot lower, you can see that, and I don't know why that was black and white, but it was.
Very artistic.
Trying to get artistic with you here. There's a color one, so you can see the other portion. So this is a, the, the back is actually 100-foot wide. Had it been left on its own as separate properties, it would have complied with the standards for allowing a single-family dwelling to be built. As you can see, even the neighboring houses cut a little bit into the hill, so there'll probably be some cut that has to happen there to make development work on the property. The fact that this is enabling an infill situation by dividing this off, the relief is really going to the remaining house, by, by one perspective, but it's also relief allowing a division of the property that's going to give an infill situation. So from that standpoint, we are also asking for standards to be applied to that infill situation, so we want to put some conditions on this relief in order to ensure that, one of those is actually going to be the full basement. And again, the city's argument is that it's probably better to depreciate that economically over time, and gain the, the value of that. It's going to be a better improvement for the tax base as a basement than it is without a basement, so I guess it's kind of whether, the question is, is it cheaper now, or is it more expensive later? Or is it taking in the flesh out of the tax base? So, that's the question that has to be answered yet. Any, we did want to make sure that any modified lot configuration meets any subdivision requirements. In this case, I'm not sure if they would need to do a retracement, just to, or if they could just do it by a description. We'll leave that up to the legal element of that, but we want to make sure they do follow through with that, to, to make sure that they comply. We want to make sure that anything that is built on the remainder portion is of a design and elevation that we can approve with the planning administrator. Again, we don't have any specific designs, they're looking to sell the property, so the, the application didn't include a proposal for how that would be built. So, we're sort of creating some ambiguous conditions here, a little bit, without having an actual design to react to. We do want to make sure, again, that the, there's a detached garage and, of a size, if there's not an, if there's not an attached, we want a detached garage that would have at least space for one vehicle and some storage. We do want a storage, otherwise, we want a storage shed of 100 square feet. Any exterior materials should be durable, masonry, brick or stone, vinyl, durable thickness, cedar, cement, fiberboard, or equivalent quality. We don't want to rule out any products that would come along that might be equivalent for their durability and their warranty. Any dwelling shall be constructed with a covered front porch that is no less than 60 square feet, or one-third of the facade would be clad with brick and stone masonry. Again, that's to give a residential character. I believe the home on the rest of the property had a front porch, was built with a front porch. It's the character of the area that really comes into play there. Any dwelling shall have the window and door trim that is a nominal four inches. Roof of any house constructed shall be architectural shingles, and any dwellings and accessory structures shall be constructed in compliance with our building codes, with issuance of permits by the Permit and Development Center. I'm going to show you the consent. There was one opposition, when I read that, I really didn't make any sense of it, to be honest with you, so I'll let you try to decipher that on your own. I don't think it really pointed to any of the elements of the relief, so.
Eric, within this, this was on consent agenda, so is the reason it was removed because of the opposition card, or because, was there a concern with the?
No, the owner of the property raised her hand when you read that, and I don't think she?
Which is you.
She wants to at least have a chance to talk, address the board about whether those conditions are all necessary.
Got you. Okay, all right.
Because initially, they filed, they just want to be able to sell this to a buyer they've already got.
Right.
They're, they're dealing with, so I think they just want to clarify what, what's really absolutely necessary.
All right, thank you.
So on the?
Yes, Nathan?
If I could?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. So on the fourth provision, if they have an attached garage that's the same size as what's described in A, they would still have to build a separate storage shed?
No, I think that's, it should have been just garage.
Okay.
I don't know why, it's wide enough.
There is the or behind it.
It is wide enough that it's conceivable that it would be an attached or detached, so.
Yeah, okay.
Your standard lingo could be, an attached or detached garage, and then the or in the future. But yeah, it's a good clarification.
Yeah, because if this were a narrow, if this was a narrow lot, then we don't want them to narrow the house.
Right.
And provide an attached garage.
Yeah, if we just say a garage, in the future. Okay, anything else? All right, thanks Eric. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant, you've got the floor. You've got up to 10 minutes to give your case, we just need your name and address to start off.
Hi.
Feel free to adjust that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for approving the split. My name is Teresa Riggi Reiner. My address is 1820 Peyton Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. The reason I wanted to speak is that what we had requested was adjustment for the property on Southwest 2nd, that would be the, this property here, it was five feet short of the 60 feet required. And what we ended up with were all the stipulations on the property facing union here. And so, we're not asking to develop that property, we're just, we have a pending offer to sell that property, and my concern is that it's going to make it a little harder for us to sell that. The people buying it are actually the people living in this home right here, which at one, this one, which at one point was actually all part of the property as well. This property's been in our family for almost 100 years, and that property behind there has never been developed, and I don't believe they have any thoughts to develop it either, until about 15 or 20 years down the road, when their daughter, they may build a home for their daughter to live in, to care for them. So, I, my concern is that if I go to them and say, "Now you have all these things," and they're, they're Hispanic family, and the father doesn't really speak English, and I go to him, and I try to explain all this stuff to him, I'm afraid that we may, they may not want to purchase the land. That, that's part of my fear. So, I'm, I'm wondering, is it absolutely necessary to do these things right now? Can those, can these, what are they called, exceptions or variances, be put on the land when, at the time that they go to build on the land? That's my question. I don't want to, I don't want to stop the land being split, because I don't, that would definitely kill the sale. But, my question is, does this, does this absolutely have to be done right now?
Okay, and I think we can answer those for you, and I might have our attorney help with that.
Okay. Or do all of these have to be put on there right now?
I think that's a fair question, and I'm going to answer your question, but then I also might ask for staff to give input as to the new zoning code. So, I, the way that this reads, my opinion is that if there was to be a dwelling constructed, then it would have to meet these conditions. But I think it would be in your benefit, and your, the buyer's benefit, as well as in the city's benefit, to make that more clear. So I think there is language that I could add, and work with the board on adding if they chose to, to make it more clear that that would be, if, in the event of construction of a dwelling, then these things apply. If, you know, if that works for you, if you're, if you object to that, too, then that's something that you need to share with the board. I would ask staff regarding the new zoning code. Normally, I would, that would be my advice that's best for the city. However, given the, the potential of the new zoning code that would then have terms that may be different than what we're putting in this decision in order, what is preferable? To have these conditions there for future development, or just to rely on the zoning code, which probably is best for the buyer?
Do you want to answer that now?
Well, we can answer it now, or we can continue it to discuss, but again, that, that's a detriment to the applicant.
If, if you don't mind sharing the microphone for just a second, let's have Eric help answer that, and then we'll come back to you.
And may I just say something else? Like, the thing with the porch, the house right here doesn't have a porch. Many of these homes around here don't have garages.
Right. But the idea is, this comes back to quid pro quo, meaning if you want something, then we want something. You want to subdivide a lot to where it will be smaller than what's allowed. So in order to allow you to keep the smaller lot that's not wide enough, it's like, hey, well, what are you going to give back to improve the quality of that neighborhood?
Even though all of these are 50-foot lots? Oh, I see. So if I want a 50-foot lot, I have to?
Because now it's an R160 district, yeah. So, yeah, hold on just a second, let's let Eric answer this technical angle here for you.
With regard to the new code, I wouldn't see any of these conditions being in conflict with what's being proposed in the new code. The new code will probably be more restrictive than this.
Oh, see, okay.
But, and it would still be in effect if the thing was built.
Regardless.
Right. So, from that standpoint, I didn't, there wasn't any concern about putting those requirements on it. But the other thing is, is there's probably a good seven months before those are in effect, so if the seller, you know, the seller's telling us, tell her they don't want to build on it for a while, but things ha, we've seen all kinds of things happen in the past, and nothing would stop them from going in and getting a building permit, you know, right away, after they would divide it off.
Right.
I think from our perspective, we were just trying to sort of fill that gap between now and when the code would get into place, but yeah, the new code, if it gets adopted, will have probably some more specific standards, even than this, that may come into play.
Okay.
So I guess her main question is, is that she wants to split the lots into two, which makes it 50, R150, right? And it's R160 zone four, is that what you're?
Well, she, her, the existing lot would be an R155, you could say.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They don't want to build anything on the, the one piece that doesn't have anything on there now.
Right.
And her question is, what are these conditions going to affect, even though they're not going to build anything?
The conditions would apply to future development on the lot, but you don't have to build the house right now, or they don't have to, they can take title and not build a house, and just have an open lot.
And what it sounds like to me is, the new zoning code that would take effect if we did nothing, are more restrictive than what this is. So this is kind of maybe a win-win, that we know what's going to happen, and we cover like a gap insurance.
Yeah.
So that means if they, if they build in the future, they can use these?
Yes.
They don't have to land. They don't have to use the new, more restrictive.
Well, I think, that would be the case, that's why I asked the question of staff. And, and I do think there is a way to make that more clear, that again, the construction isn't, doesn't have to be immediate.
Right.
So this is actually a good thing for them, then?
Depending on how you want to look at it, yes. Unless people don't want to build a house with a basement or a garage, and if they're, you'll have a very nice lot for them. You've got an unused lot, which is rare in this part of town.
Yeah.
So I, if I built there, I'd want a basement, I'd want a garage, and I'd want a nice quality house, and none of these conditions would be contrary to that.
I'm, I mean, I'm sure they, if they build it for their child, they would want it, too. What I'm just saying is that I was afraid to go in and say, "Here's the restrictions on the land we're selling you." I was afraid that would make them feel?
But, but you would need to provide that to them regardless.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, for full disclosure.
I understand that, that was what was making me afraid. But, now it sounds like it might be a good thing, so.
And in that event, as I mentioned, if there are concerns that you have with these conditions, you should, other than, than that issue you've raised, you should still tell those to the board now.
So, do I, so I have to provide them with this? Can it, as, as legal counsel said, can it say, can it say, when I give it to them, if and when you build on this property, these are the, instead of, here's what you have to do?
Like now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if that's the direction of the board, we can easily, I can easily talk through writing that in.
We can, we can write that in the conditions when we, when we make a motion, right?
And since any approvals have to be implemented, constructed- And since any approvals have to be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years, would we want to put in some provizio that allows that, where if they don't build the house in two years, then they got to come back again?
Well, I think if it's...
It's the division of the land that's...
It stays with it.
Right. That's the way.
Okay, so that's, okay, yeah. So then, yeah, you could provide that to them, it'll be part of the city's record. If somebody goes to pull a building permit, they would look in the file for that address and see that.
So that would only last two years? Or if they tried to divide the land further than it?
It would last indefinitely.
It would just last indefinitely, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It, it would last indefinitely, so...
It would last indefinitely.
The requirements here would be the requirements for the next 100 years, if somebody wants to build a house there, that would need to have a basement, need to have a garage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, are you, are you saying that if we put these restrictions on right now, they somehow supersede the new zoning code even if they don't build until after the zoning code comes into play?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and staff wasn't aware that that was the case, but...
Well, this staff, this staff...
What Eric is saying is, staff wasn't aware that they weren't going to build immediately.
Yeah.
Couldn't, couldn't we have a...
No, we were aware they weren't going to build immediately, we just didn't know when.
We're just having to add on, these conditions or the city's current zoning code, whichever is more restrictive.
Right. I mean, if you really are worried about it, you could say, nothing can be built until it comes back to the board, and then you can decide that.
I don't want to do that.
But we wanted to put the, the standard stipulations we, we would for any infill. This is creating an infill opportunity that wouldn't be there if you didn't give the relief. So that's why we put the conditions.
And you were, from my, you said to ensure, if we didn't do anything at all, if we had said they had to wait, or whatever, they could decide to build anything on there right now, because right now there's no zoning on that piece of property, because it's not a piece of property.
No, we couldn't, they couldn't build on that now.
Can't have two houses on one lot.
But no, if they divide the lot, but we don't have any conditions on the division of the lot.
They can't legally divide it, because it's too small. That's why they're here.
Yeah.
But if we were to, if we were to approve the smaller lot...
They could do the bare minimum.
And put no conditions on this other lot.
Oh, well, we could sure do that.
They could put 45 mobile homes on it, or whatever.
Well, if you don't want conditions, you could make that a proposal.
They could build minimally with a single-family dwelling if you didn't put conditions on it.
Right.
So it's, it's a risk thing.
I think we're good, and I think she just, we're good.
I think, I, I would like to move staff recommendation, changing the detached garage, removing that portion from it, and adding on to the wording, it's approved if and when a home is built on this property. So we know that there's no immediate need, and...
Just say a garage.
Yeah, just say a garage.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
And scratch the storage shed requirement, then?
Yeah, it was or, on the end of...
Oh, really? So you're okay with a storage shed, instead of a garage?
Okay, we'll remove the storage shed.
Just ask them.
Just ask them to the garage, then.
Yeah.
And, so that's my motion.
Yeah, sure, so, we'll just really track with what Lynn said, so, under number one, the new number two would be, if and when a, a dwelling is constructed on the property to the east, the eastern lot, then the following conditions would apply, and so then conditions two through nine would apply in that event.
Okay.
With the changes to the garage...
That a garage shall be provided.
Yes.
Okay.
And no shed.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by John. All right? All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, didn't see none? Okay, motion carries unanimously, six zero.
So did you decide to give us forever?
Yeah, it's...
It's generally forever. Yep, yep, okay, all right. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, once you divide it, then that goes...
Okay, that'll bring us then to item six, an exception request at 511-58th Street.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item number six is an exception to the minimum required front yard setback. The applicant is wanting to construct a porch onto the front of the dwelling that would extend slightly into the required front yard area. So they've asked for an exception of 11 feet less than the required 38 feet. The subject property is located in the Waterbury neighborhood, it's an irregularly shaped Here is the general location of the proposed porch, again, it'd be 27 feet from the front property line. Here are some designs that they provided that show how the porch would be situated. And then here's the drawing. Really, the only reason this is up for discussion today, not on the consent agenda, is that they're proposing a metal roof, like an architecturally designed metal roof, rather than asphalt shingles. And staff had recommended that they use asphalt shingles to match the existing shingles on the roof of the house. Here are a couple photos of what the house looks like now. You can see it doesn't have a porch or a covered entry. This is kind of from the other angle. And then the consent map, we did get one card in opposition, and I'll just lay that up here now. But staff has recommended approval of the exception, we feel it's appropriate for them to have a covered entry on their house. We did make it subject to three conditions, and number two on, of those conditions is that they have asphalt shingles on the roof, so. That's really the only thing we need to discuss today, is whether to require asphalt shingles or to let them do the metal roof that they're proposing. Any questions?
Can they replace asphalt shingles with a metal roof on their house?
Yeah, they could do that today if they wanted to.
So Bert, in the 21st century now, we do have metal roofing that has architectural pressing to look like shingles. I know of a house with a metal roof, and you wouldn't know the difference.
I know what you mean, yeah.
Would there, would staff have a problem in general down the line to look at alternative building materials, as long as they're complementary in appearance?
Right, I, I believe, because even those metal shingles that you're talking about have kind of an asphalt or a gritty material coating on the top.
Yeah, yeah, almost looks like a bed liner to them.
So I think that would meet our recommenda, the recommended condition.
Okay. All right. I'm just curious. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Bert? All right, thank you for your clarity and brevity. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is David Cruz, it's my business partner, Kerry Norris, with Grand Homes and Renovations, we're at 1910 Normandy Drive, Carlisle, Iowa. I'd like to thank the, the staff and Bert for always helping us out with these little tricky projects with these lot of records. We always run into some hangups on this, and he's always been great help with that. And I think this might be a little easier solution than what, than we might be thinking. The existing roof has actually a tile roof, it does not have an asphalt shingle roof. The home was built in 1936, so it's, it's got the existing tile roof, which has aged here for, you know, we're pushing 100 years here shortly. So our challenge when approaching a project like this, adding this porch, is how do we cover this, make it look like it blends in with the house, matches up with other things that have happened in the neighborhood? We didn't want to go with the asphalt shingle, that's the cheapest route to go. The metal that we're proposing to do this is, is a darker color, it's an aged bronze, standing seam metal roof. This is a good depiction of the, of the style and the color that we'd be proposing. Feel like it would blend into the neighborhood. We spent a little bit of time, we just drove around the Waterbury area along Grand Avenue, and you can, about any block you encounter there in those, in those neighborhoods, you'll find a metal roof with a different house roof combination, so. Our goal is to do something that, that blends in well. It's a great, great product, it's an expensive product. It's something that we feel is going to create a, a great lasting impression in that neighborhood, something nobody's going to have to deal with for a long, long time. So appreciate the staff's concern about how that's going to blend in and look, we just felt like this is our best opportunity to make something look really good from the street, and complement what's going on in the existing roof house. Do you have any questions for us?
I couldn't tell that that was a tile roof from that picture, maybe others could, but I couldn't. What color is the tile roof?
Well, it's a terracotta, regular tile, but it's aged so much that has a green patina, it's got some brown to it, so it's, it's a mixture of all of those things that happen over...
But that's why you're picking the bronze color of metal.
Yeah, it's kind of a, and we, we feel it's, it's a color that's going to just kind of blend in. We talked about, yeah, we talked about a, a real copper and how bright and shiny that would be. This aged one really kind of brings in the muted colors and kind of just goes away with the, with the shade that's created in the streets.
And that terracotta, the, the current tile roof has been in there in 1936, does it, anybody have given us the expected life left on it? I mean, all things eventually fail.
Oh, yeah, it...
It's in good condition?
Yeah, it's in great condition, they've done some repairs on it. It's intended to stay there for another 50, 60 years.
Okay.
The tile actually has to break down for it to fail.
Were those other pictures that you showed us in the Waterbury area? So they're in Des Moines?
Yeah, actually, like this is on the Waterbury Road, this one is, oh, sorry. I'll show you this one. I, I do want to point out, may I talk?
Yeah, please, we just need your name again, I know you're Kerry, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
It's Kerry Norris. So on 37th Street, south of Grand, we've done some work there, and this house is, the whole thing is metal. This is along Grand Avenue, most of you probably see that. This is south of Grand, this is a combination of asphalt shingles and metal. This is a brand-new house going up just down the street from Waterbury, that front section is metal. I did some duplicates. This one is just off of 42nd Street. They did a copper, which is really bright and shiny, pretty, but we were looking for that aged look to go with the roof. And then these are also south of Grand, I think this is on like 32nd Street, and I, I know it's smaller, but...
Okay, I think we got it. Appreciate you going through this.
Can you show back the original, the, the picture of the roof of, that you're proposing, that, the...
Oh, the color that we're proposing?
Elevation or whatever, just so I can see what the roof is, like a...
The drawing.
Yeah.
The drawing.
Yeah. Let's see. Just want to see that.
Just trying to visualize everything, I'm sure mine's going to...
Is there? Let me see it in the stack, just the elevation.
Oh.
Okay, yep, you got to slide it over there, there we go.
Thank you, thank you.
So, comment and a question for you. You showed a lot of great roofs that have metal and standing seams, I understand that, and they look great. I'm assuming that all of those properties did not need to seek relief from the zoning ordinance, that they had proper setbacks. This is a case where the owner, the porch is going to push out further than the other houses around it, so it's into the established front yard setback. So that's why staff will say that, hey, to counter that quote intrusion, if we grant this relief, you're poking out there a little further, we want to make sure that it looks compatible. So that's why they're pushing the asphalt thing. I, I wouldn't have a problem if you don't want to do quote asphalt shingles, as long as they're durable, I don't care what they're made out of. But when I do look at that picture, and you're going to have a porch on there, that rib standing seam looks a little, it, it looks back to, yeah, we're talking about a storage shed in a Morton building. So is there a way you could look at other materials, maybe do what you want, but have it where it's complementary in appearance, so it doesn't look like it was just a standing seam cut and rolled at the curb?
Sure, I'm going to show you one other picture.
Sure.
This is again in the same neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of what we've used to mimic how theirs is going to look.
So you got the seams closer together than what we usually see for metal roofs? Is, that's what you changed?
Can you put the house back up that you want to put this on? What's the, what's the, how far is this house that you want to make this porch on? How far away from the street does it sit? And is it up on a hill?
Yeah, it's up on a hill.
You put the picture back up?
27 feet, was it?
I don't even know how much we're going to see this roof.
Yeah, that's true.
And it's low, it's a low pitch, so you won't really see the, anything from the street, you'll have to back quite a ways.
And you're going to be, I don't think you're going to see it.
27 feet from the front property line.
No, I'm talking about the elevation.
The elevation.
Oh, oh, you're, you're saying the height of it, yeah.
And you do have the trees there and everything, so don't talk about poking...
Tell you what, I've got one of those on the front of my house. There's a lot of houses that have, and I live in that neighborhood. I mean, it looks great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't quite understand the concern, I guess, very much, because they've established pretty well now at this point, that lots of houses in this neighborhood have something similar to this. The requirement from the city, I think, is usually not purely aesthetic, except for to the, to the extent that they want it to fit into the neighborhood. Well, it's fitting into the neighborhood based on all of these examples they've shown us. The other requirement would be, so, there's a quality requirement, so it doesn't, isn't cheap. And, and I think they've already said, it's actually more expensive, and it's something that fits into what these homeowners want to do. I, I guess I'm, I just don't quite understand what, what, what then rests? If, if it's just like the aesthetics of, like our individual opinions, or the individual opinions of, of a staffer, I just don't think that's really sufficient to, to be making an objection, or, or an additional requirement.
Well, when I hear metal roof, I think of my neighbors who have a green metal roof. I guess what we're trying to avoid, I wouldn't want to see a green metal roof.
Okay, there's a...
So if we, if we reduce it to the aged bronze color, I'm fine.
All right, let's, let's back up here, go back to the applicant. Okay, so, you, you might have a thread to hang on to here. So do you guys have anything else you want to add for the moment? Are you good? Given your case?
Well, just one point to the, you know, exploring the whole exception part of it, was I've, the drawing here is, has outlined in red the existing porch, or stoop and railing that's there. So our, our build out is roughly two feet past that, that edge, anyway, so. And there's only two houses on this street, it's not like it's a line of 15 houses, and we're trying to match up with all the fronts of them. So, there's lots of record that are really tricky, and that's why we're here, and appreciate your work.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, David, thank you, Kerry. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Okay.
We have everything. Anything you can show, we need to retain.
Yep.
Yep.
That red, that red one.
Is it stuff we already had in the file?
I'll just leave this one here, that has that outline on it.
Okay, sir, we just need your name, address, and we've got up to five minutes.
Sure, thank you. Mark Daggett, 511-58th Street, I'm the homeowner. And we've lived here 19 years now, and the, just to, again, reiterate some key points there, the current roof is a, like a terracotta clay tile, kind of the wavy, well, not wavy, not like the, you know, Spanish roof, but it's, it's a tile they don't make anymore. And the first thing I did when I moved in is I had it inspected, and I've had it inspected every five to seven years since then. We had a leak a few years ago, and I was, I don't know what I thought had happened, but I was surprised when they said, oh, the, the tar paper is the original tar paper but I was surprised when they said, oh, the tar paper is the original tar paper from 1936. So that's how good a roof like this is. If you, if you stay on top of it and replace any cracked tiles, it lasts a very long time. And I had a guy who retired who could always get me the clay tiles. They don't make them like this anymore, one of those things, right in the old neighborhood. So when we went to do this porch, I, you know, asphalt really isn't appealing when it's up against the clay tile. The original color of this is sort of a seafoam green, which looks nice with the terracotta brick. You know, it sits in the shade a lot, it's kind of darkened and somewhat, so we debated what to do. I'm a fan of copper trim on houses. I debated copper, but it seemed like it would be too much copper because of the expanse of the porch. And I think, in all fairness, when you look at this drawing, you know, you see those lines, and you think, gee whiz. And I know what you mean, I grew up in the country, I know what a pole barn looks like. I didn't want to do that either, but in working with David and Carrie, they've shown enough pictures, some of which she put up here, and we spent a lot of time fussing around with just which color. And I think this antique bronze sort of just disappears to where you don't see it. It's complementary to the brick, it'll look okay, it's complementary to the existing roof, and our goal, frankly, we talked about the roof an awful lot, our goal is that nobody will talk about the roof once the thing is built. Once we decided to go away from the copper, we didn't really want to make the roof stand out. I think this will stand out less, frankly. If I, if I do shingles, I'd probably try and do green to match the roof, and then I got a lot going on. I think this will just sort of disappear, and I think those lines that you see in the drawing, I think the lines will tend to kind of go away with that darker color, you know, because that'll get some, that'll get some, you know, moss or mildew up there, and those lines will kind of blend away in the shadows of that dark color. So happy to answer any questions, I just wanted to reiterate a few points that David had made.
Sure. No, good points, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Okay, all right. Thank you, sir, and thank you for having a great home in the city of Des Moines. Appreciate you being here. Okay, anybody else here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? Seeing none?
I was going to mention, all the information they presented, I guess, addresses the concerns we did have with the metal roof, so we'd be willing-
Should we talk to them on the phone a little more?
Right.
Well, Bert, sometimes we talk about, since you're there, things like building materials that are complementary in appearance as generally described by the applicant. If we had that-
Right, yeah.
-as an item, would that be clear enough? Without having Ludwig have to review by the planning administrator in this case?
Yeah, I think that would be adequate.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
I second it.
As soon as I get ready. All right, Bert, thank you. All right, we'll close public portion and go to board deliberation. I think everybody's been clear here, they've been clear. What if I made a motion to approve the requested exemption, subject to the following conditions? Condition one, condition three, and then condition two, modify that. Port shall be constructed with building materials that are complementary in appearance with the primary dwelling as generally described by the applicant.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, so we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right, motion carries six zero. Okay, good work by all here. I often say we aren't here to pick colors of curtains and shutters, but sometimes it seems like we can lean that way. So glad we stayed out of the weeds, okay. Moving forward on the agenda, we're getting back on track here. We will now move to item number 11, correct?
Correct.
Which is on our regular portion of the agenda here, finally. So we dealt with all of our consent items. Item 11 is a conditional use permit request at 2956 East Grand Avenue.
This item was actually continued from last month to, so staff had time to look into some of the concerns raised during the hearing last month. The subject property is the Main Gate Tavern at the corner of East Grand Avenue and East 30th Street, right outside the main gate to the Iowa State Fairgrounds. The subject property is comprised of three different parcels, and one of which contains the bar, one contains a single-family house, and then the other just contains a portion of the parking lot. If you remember, last month, staff was recommending that the three parcels be combined, but since, since the last hearing we've met and we've determined that combining these parcels would actually be problematic, because then you would have a single-family house on the same parcel as the tavern, so we decided it would be better if we recommended some parking arrangement and/or easement be developed and recorded, and also provided to the zoning enforcement officer that shows that these, the entire parking lot would be tied to the tavern use on that property, so.
The tavern use have a conditional use permit with this board?
No, no, so the existing tavern predates our conditional use permit requirements, so it has been noticed as, in order to expand the tavern, the existing tavern needs to be brought under the conditional use permit cri, requirements, and then the proposed patio would also be under those same conditional use permits, so. As this sketch shows, they're proposing to add the patio onto the east, I'm sorry, under the west side of the tavern, which is also on the same parcel that contains the single-family dwelling. This is just the sketch that shows the materials that would be used for the tavern, or I'm sorry, for the patio. And then this here shows the layout of the bar. Now, you can see there'd be an entrance to the patio at this, near the southwest corner of the building. Here are the site photos again, the existing tavern, and the new patio structure would replace this concrete patio here, and it would go the full length of the building. And then this shows that single-family house that's on the subject property, just another angle. And then, this will, yeah, this is the current consent map. So one of the cards, the two cards in opposition are just right here at the 250-foot mark. As I previously alluded to, we have recommended approval for the conditional use permit that would cover both the existing tavern and the proposed patio, but we have recommended the standard conditions plus conditions number two and three, which I'll focus on now. Condition number two is, it says, if the patio is located on a separate parcel than the tavern, an easement for the patio shall be recorded with Polk County. And then condition number three says, all parking associated with the tavern that is not located on the same parcel as the tavern shall be in accordance with a lease agreement and/or easement that is recorded with Polk County and provided to the zoning enforcement officer. And the purpose of that is just to ensure that the parking shall remain tied to the tavern use in the event that any of the three parcels are sold or held under separate ownership. Any questions for me?
Bert, I do have a question on number four. Outdoor speakers are amplified sound. I see there's a stage listed on their site plan, or whatever you want to call it, the drawing. How do you put that into perspective?
Sure, this stage is located inside the tavern.
Oh, this is inside, again, okay.
Yeah, so the patio is-
The patio is outside, got it, okay. I just saw a stage and I panicked, okay. All right. Would you also assume that no live performances of music outside? Usually I'm assuming those are amplified.
Yeah, I guess we missed.
Okay, speakers are amplified sound.
But you could also add, there shall be no outdoor speakers or amplified sound or any other live entertainment-
Okay.
-on the premise at any time.
Well, it could be live entertainment, but not planned, so.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for Bert? Okay, all right, applicant or representative of the applicant? Thank you for your patience and waiting, welcome.
Yeah, well, my name's Frank Aspegg, and I'm the owner of the tavern. And we, well, James Catherine, he owns the property, and he went down to the auditor's office to do what you guys recommended last time, so that's taken care of. This Brenda Perillo at the auditor's office, she told him that they're going to put a lot, give us a lot number for the two parts, you know, the bar and the house. Well, she was supposed to contact me today, but I think because of the, all the appeal for the taxes, they're kind of swamped down there, so they're kind of staying, I haven't heard nothing from her anyway, so, to kill me, but they were supposed to include you guys into the thing, or the city, the donors. I don't know, you, do you know her?
I do not, and I haven't heard, but our recommendation is actually that you keep them separated.
Well, it's an easement, but that, what they said to us down there-
Okay.
-that they gotta put it under one lot.
I'll phrase it this.
I mean, I'm just, I'm fighting one way or the other, you know?
Sure. Okay.
All right, Frank, what else do you want to add here while our clock's ticking?
Well, I mean, we're just trying to do everything. I got the, these papers, if you want to-
Okay. You can, we'll have staff hand those around. I guess what I would say, Frank, staff's recommending approval here, but they have 10 conditions on here. Are you okay? You've hopefully had time to read all those conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, and I want you to understand something, your bar had a right of existence before to exist as a tavern. If you want to have this patio now, everything comes in to our jurisdiction under this conditional use permit. What that means is, by you wanting to expand and add the patio, we draw the bar into our review now, so if we say yes today and we have problems, Sue Ann Donovan can draw this back in here, and then we can take away your right to have a bar, period. So, so in other words, you're going to go on some extra double-secret probation here, that as long as you're running a good business there and everybody complies with these 10 conditions, everything will be just fine. But if we get a lot of police reports, or if Sue Ann goes out there and says there's noise and noise and noise, and she comes back with this, we would have the legal right to say, sorry, you can't have a bar there anymore. So I just want you to understand that sometimes we give people what they ask for, but if we give enough rope, I don't want you to, you know, get yourself caught up in it.
Well, I mean, I didn't see the 10 things at the last meeting you brought up.
No, no, if, if, did you pick up an agenda when you sat down here today? The staff recommendations are all there, and Bert went through those.
Yeah, it was in this thing that we've got in the mail.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And the basic ideas behind them is you can't create a nuisance condition with noise and activity and, and loitering and litter and problems, and if you do, and we hear about it, we could potentially take away someone's conditional use permit, which we have done before.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to run a nice place and-
Sure.
I mean, it's just a othman's bar, and, you know, the people get off work and-
Yep.
And they want to go outside and relax out there on the patio.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and, and generally speaking, we have lots of conditional use permits that do just that, and they have no problems. So I just want to make you aware of, of the oversight jurisdiction and authority of the board here, so that we all know what we're going to be getting into.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm good with it.
All right. Anything else you want to add?
No, I'm just-
Okay.
Looking, looking forward to put the patio in, fence in.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Frank? Okay, all right, you can go ahead and sit down for a few minutes, we'll see what some others have to say. Is there anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Okay, seeing none, is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, I'll, I'll let you all decide who goes first. Wise decision there, sir.
I live at 2927 East Grand, and I oppose the patio outside with the music. Okay, was there questions? You, you want me just to keep going?
Well, you've seen the 10 conditions we've got there. Do you think that that would alleviate your, your concerns?
It should, but another concern that was brought, that I noticed at the last meeting is there was very little calls supposedly reporting on noise and so forth, so I know that's not a true, someone's not doing something, and when the police are called, somehow they are notified evidently because the noise stops when the police drive through the parking lot, leave, the noise goes back up. So is there someone else we can call instead of the police?
Well, there's, there's somebody who I think you could call, but, but they don't let them carry a gun and enforce criminal law, but, but in general, yeah, and if you want to talk to that, you'd have to be prepared to provide some documentation. I called this time, here was the trip report, here was the officer's report, here's what did or didn't happen. So I can't speculate on who is or isn't replying or responding. You'd, you'd have to have some specific dates, times, officers, et cetera, for some evidence on that. But we generally, yes, if there are noise complaints, especially from taverns, we hope that the police follows through on that. Like I referenced with the conditional use permit, if somebody violates the conditions repeatedly because we have too many police reports, or zoning enforcement officer saw this on repeated conditions as a problem and brings it back, we can then revoke a permit. And nobody likes to have that happen. That's very painful for everybody involved, so.
I will say, since this guy is leasing it, there hasn't been problems. It was the previous leaser that-
Okay, and I think that's very important to note.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't him, I mean, there's-
Yeah, I mean, if you've had problems in the past, let's say that was quite a ways ago, but things have been good in recent time, that's the best indicator of future behavior.
Okay, because I mean, me and my husband like to go sit outside at night-
True.
You know, and-
Certainly, on your property.
Count planes.
Yes, okay.
You know, but so far there hasn't this year. Last summer, it was horrible.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming down again, appreciate it. Anybody else here to speak in opposition?
My name is Leonard Overton, 2914 East Grand. I went over the agenda there, and you have the 10 things there. One of the main things on that that doesn't seem to be in compliance is the litter.
Okay.
Standing outside, smoking cigarettes. I have seen ice trays out there, but they don't seem to hit the ice tray. They're in the sidewalk, flip them out into the street, empty cigarette packages on the sidewalks. There's a lot of us in the neighborhood who's trying to clean the neighborhood up, and we would appreciate a little help from them to get this taken care of.
Okay, bet. And from what I've seen, good tavern owners do that. They'll, they'll be out there with the broom the next morning after the fun times cleaning up the curb in the street.
Just don't sweep it out into the street.
That's right, because that's public property. All right, thank you, Leonard. Anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, do we have any further questions for staff? If none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
Does he get a chance to rebut?
Oh, yes, thank you, Nathan, my excellent vice chair. So Frank?
Yeah.
Since a couple people kind of spoke in opposition or had some concern, you are welcome to come back up here for a couple, three minutes and, and hopefully massage or soothe those concerns, or take, take them to heart.
I can give you my cell phone number to whoever wants, they see a complaint, all they got to do is call me. I'll make it right with the, with everybody, and then I got people that are going to clean it up, and once I think, put the patio up, the cigarettes and all the trash is going to be in there, and I'll have garbage cans for everything out there. So, I mean, I want a clean, clean street and a clean parking lot.
Right.
I mean, it don't stop people from going through that alley and throwing out tires.
Right.
They want to use my dumpster, you know?
Yeah, 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 but, but those aren't your customers, and you wouldn't want them as customers.
Yeah, well, I don't want dirt trash in my backyard either, you know, but that happens.
But if it happens, you try to clean it up, yep.
Okay, that's, I mean, I give you my cell phone number, if you, you got a problem, you call me and I'll take care of it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Frank. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation.
Well, I think it's admirable to have somebody come back the second month and say that they have seen improvement after it was brought to the owner's attention, and for his offer of the cell phone being provided to him, I think is above and beyond. And I think as long as they follow the 12 or the 10 provisions that we listed out that were fine, so I'm going to move staff.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, motion carries six to zero. So Frank, you've been approved. We got those 10 conditions, which the way you've been running it and the way you're going to in the future, you should be able to comply with all of them. And I would encourage you to invite all those neighbors to open a house when your patio's done.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you all for coming down today. I wish you well. Okay, that'll bring us to item 12, an exception request at 91131st Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, another situation where we have an addition to the front that's going to encroach into the front yard setback that's required. In this case, we're looking at a property just north of I-235 at 31st Street. This is kind of an entrance into the Drake neighborhood area, if you're familiar, right off the freeway. It's the first house as you come off the westbound off-ramp going north. The houses in that area have a larger than the normal 30-foot setback, so the averaging is higher. So they're, in order to add on to the front of the property, they're having to get relief of that averaging. In addition, they're looking to provide a parking, a garage for parking and the actual amount of maneuvering behind the garage entrance to get the vehicles in and out is four feet less than the standard 24 required by the code. That's really a standard that's put into place that applies to parking lots or anywhere where we're trying to perpendicularly park. And I'll kind of show you that on this sketch here. This has actually got the aerial, so you can see too. The footprint of the garage addition is right here. Maybe hard to see with the aerial behind it. They're also wanting a small pad that would come out here in front of the garage to park alongside it. And then they're retaining the driveway into it and to perpendicularly park into the garage or into this pad, they only have 20 feet rather than the 24 feet. Now, they're not dealing with an aisle of traffic going back and forth behind them, so it's not totally impractical to lose four feet from that standpoint. That is an exception. I don't think for them to really achieve this, they probably would have to shift the garage further south, perhaps into a setback, another setback which they'd have to get relief from or they'd have to work with their neighbor to allow the apron to encroach onto the property to the north, which I also don't think is really desirable as well. So from that standpoint, staff really isn't concerned about the one owner maneuvering within their own property. It'd be different if this was a drive aisle passing through or an alley where multiple users were going to potentially be in conflict. So that'd be a little more unsafe. This is, you know, these are going to be the same people coming in, parking. They'll be very familiar with their limitations and I don't think it's a practical concern. With regard to the addition, the applicant did provide a rendering to show you. So this parking area sits below the front of the house where it comes out at grade. It's going to eclipse a little bit of the facade from the street presence. It's a flat roof, so it actually will minimize that obscurement from that standpoint. It won't match the fact that it has a pitched roof on the rest of the house. So from that standpoint, it doesn't, it isn't compatible. They're looking at lap siding, which is appropriate. Staff is a little concerned. It looks like a blank wall. So we're recommending that there be windows that would give it a little more compatibility with the existing structure. They are challenged with the topography. I don't think there's really a realistic way for them to get this garage in and around behind. If you looked at the aerial, they're pretty much as wide as the lot. They could use the property to the south possibly, I guess, to swing a driveway around to the back. But again, then you've got all kinds of paving. One of the other concerns we have is we really aren't supportive of another car then parking in front of this garage to even further detract from the appearance of it sticking out from the house. So from that standpoint, we are recommending not to allow that additional pad there in front. It'd actually be better, honestly, to have the garage detached or something and then have another stall in behind it where the car would be hidden from the street view. I think they want the connection to the house, so it's an attached garage. So staff is recommending approval. We find that it meets the criteria for the practical difficulty. We do want these four conditions based on trying to... Or seven conditions to meet the essential character. We don't want any more than 25% of the front yard to be paved, which if you remove that paving out in front of it, then that would assure that that would be achieved. Any space between the garage addition and the front property line shall consist of a permeable landscaped area and a four-foot walk may cut through that area if that's necessary. Foundation plantings provided along the south and west facade. So again, to sort of break up that, you know, give it some softness at the bottom of that edge, which is going to stick well below the bottom of the house in the appearance of it. Any garage addition shall include a minimum of two full-size windows or three half-size windows on the west front facade as approved by the planning administrator. Any garage addition shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the submitted design and elevation. Any garage shall be constructed with building materials that are compatible. And then any garage shall be constructed in conformance with the building codes. This is the existing house, so you can kind of get a sense of the situation with the topography and going to... It's going to still have a steep drive.
Where that car is parked right there in that picture, you're asking them to take out the cement that's under it?
Well, I guess that would be a good question for the applicant. It's not clear if that's where the extent... I believe the garage would actually take up where that car is, at least part of the way. And then they would probably need to have more paving to get it to...
It just looks like from the aerial shot that the drawing that I thought was the garage fit in to the east of where that car is, like a car is parked.
Yep, so you're saying this is... Yeah.
So really what they're asking for is to maintain the cement that they've got?
Yeah.
Okay, and the city is recommending that we require that they take it out?
Right, well...
You don't really have that in writing except the 25% paved.
Right, we believe that...
More than 25% front yard.
We believe they would be in violation of that, but I guess you can debate that.
Eric, wouldn't condition two address that concern?
Sure. Yep.
Again, this is in an effort to soften it up with the plantings and so forth.
Right, right.
That's going to come down to the boards, what the board thinks is appropriate.
We can see what the applicant thinks or is proposing.
I don't think it would cause them to have to come back for any relief. We just don't want them to maybe come in and increase the paving by... We're sort of preempting them to also put something in here possibly for another, which I think they'd still have to come back to the board anyway.
Okay.
It's really about trying to get this to be compatible. This is one last photo to show how this looks. So you can see that would be the car that's in the... To get a feel for where it's coming from from the street perspective of the interchange there.
Okay.
And then we did get the one card from the owner to the south. They weren't ambivalent. I think they just didn't have all the information to make a, take a position at that point in time. But they did want to make sure that there was some review of compatibility.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Eric?
This is the map that reflects that.
Got you.
I'll put this one up, back up, so you have that.
To start us off, cool. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant. Thank you for waiting patiently this afternoon. Welcome.
I'm Rick Hickman, 532 29th Street in Des Moines. And if I can get, are these... Okay, I would just like, I would just like to have that picture.
Yeah, just set it right on top of the other one. It's up there.
To your right there for...
Oh, this one.
There you go.
Okay. We're trying to accomplish several things here. With the freeway, when it came in, it made the driveway pretty steep. So really, we're going to be putting the garage excavating down, so the concrete footprint that's there now, which almost can put three cars in, will be less. And so the landscaping is really going to only change in terms of the depth of the drive and the less severity of the, severity of the drive. And we'll kind of tuck the garage right in. And then, of course, it'll save a lot of problems that you can back out of the garage and come out the drive rather than backing out onto 31st Street, which can be pretty difficult. But I'm open to answer any questions. The picture of the rendering doesn't give a very good picture of how the landscaping actually is going to be because it's going to be dug out. And that, it's really not going to be... There's not going to be that much of the wall showing from the street.
So you're going to be removing some of the concrete that's there right now to do this?
Yes, yes, it'll be less than it is there, less than there is today.
And that's how you get to have only be 25% of the front yard?
Is the cement steps would stay or are those going to be removed?
That's going to depend on how we might end up taking the steps out and still leaving the dirt there. It just depends on, because we're going to have steps down probably to the drive, which is going to be, you know, at least seven or eight feet lower than what it is today.
Okay. And have you seen all of the conditions here that staff is recommending?
Yes.
And how do you feel about those?
I don't have any problems with that. I think it's going to be conducive to the neighborhood and make it a lot safer. Plus, without such a severe rise in the driveway.
Right, so staff's recommended approval and you're good with all the conditions?
Yes.
And Rick, the way I understand what you've proposed as well as the staff conditions, then once that garage is built, there'd be no storing any cars outside of the garage on the side of it between there and the sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you're okay with that?
Well, there won't be any, there won't be any...
Any place to do that.
Any place for that unless they park in front of the garage when, and the cars can't get out.
And that's fine, yeah.
Everybody else does.
Yeah, parking in the maneuvering area on the property is fine, but there'll be no side garage parking or parking in the front yard then. Okay, got you. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody... Oh, do we got one? Yes, we got one. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Eldon McAfee. I submitted the card that was ambivalent.
Nice to meet ambivalent people once in a while.
Yes, I do own the property to the south. I actually, well, I better follow formalities here.
Oh, yes.
I own the property at 90731st Street, Floral Hill LLC. I actually live with my wife at 3000 School Street, which is catty-cornered on the block from this. I bought the vacant property in 1998 because I needed a garden and I didn't have room in my backyard. I have owned the property since then, have fruit trees there, et cetera. And I must say, I'm very encouraged by why I'm here today and in support. I have to start by saying, I've been a longtime member of the Drake Neighborhood Association since 1988 when we moved here. And I'm not speaking on behalf of them, but when I heard about a garage on the front of a house, I cringed and I really did. But he's done an excellent job of explaining why it's needed. I've had to walk up and down that driveway and assisting some of the tenants over the years and taking in their garbage cans. Generally, they have very good tenants there. Once in a while not, but they've always been very good about taking care of it. Anyway, that driveway is way too steep and he understands that. It's been a real problem. I think this will alleviate that. The garage, again, not a fan of garages on the front of houses in the Drake neighborhood, but it really doesn't have an option here because of the lay of the property. And I think this will be the best that they can do and it'll be an improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a great statement for an ambivalent guy. Appreciate that. Okay, all right. Anybody else here to speak in opposition, support or any other statements? Okay, seeing none, any further questions for staff? All right, if none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
I'll make a motion of staff recommendation?
I'll second it. All right, motion by John, second by me. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion carries six to zero. Nice to see neighbors getting along. Thanks, guys. Okay, all right. Item 13 is a variance request at 1804 27th Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is the same applicant or appellant, different property. I think the overall intentions of what they're attempting to do with the property are, have the same level of concern. The difference here is we're dealing with variances versus exceptions, which always changes the scope of which we have to look at this. And so I'm going to show you the map here, but I'll also hand off the cards that we got. This is a little different too in that it's a corner lot. The garage will access off the side street, so probably give you a sense. We're at Whitmer and 27th, just south of Franklin Street, which is just, this is north of the Drake area, getting up towards Beaverdale area. This is the house. So it's a well-maintained house, as you can see. Then this is the north side, which is the side of the house and this is where the proposed addition comes into play. We have the same requirements on both sides of the corner to uphold a front yard setback. It may be hard again to see in this picture with the aerial and the trees covered, but this is the area that the garage would be. And you can see the, Bert zooms in a little bit, you can see the proposal there. Same type of flat roof going in essentially ground level at grade there. The house is built up a little bit, but the driveway already has retaining wall and is cut into the property. There is a tuck under garage. I don't think, probably by today's standards, that's very difficult to park a vehicle into in most cases. So they're looking, there's no question as to the motivation of why they're putting it there. Staff's looked at this in light of the variance, however, and from that standpoint, we did not see... we did not see where this is driving them to a situation where we have an unnecessary hardship. We also think there's adequate space where a detached garage could be placed on the south side of the dwelling. So there is a prac, probably a practical alternative to put something over in this area. It would take a little bit longer driveway than what they would have on the north side, so not as convenient, of course, but certainly another alternative they could look at, which wouldn't necessarily need the relief that we're, we're talking about here. And again, the relief is variances of the setback along the north side. 28.25, less than the minimum required, 36.25. And then the maneuvering space is a little substandard that close to the north property line where they're maneuvering into the street. So they don't really have 16 feet of, they don't really have enough outside the garage before you're getting into the street. So they'd be pretty much going right off the street into the garage to make that work. And if you look in our code, the maneuvering required for a parking space is not permitted to be in the street. An alley would be different, but the public street doesn't get to be used towards that dimension, so. Any questions?
So you're saying from the edge, if we were to allow this, the edge from the garage to the street is 16 feet?
Right, so if you could see here, they would be building, and again, this is kind of hard to see on the aerial, but there'd be this much distance between the sidewalk, which is on the, which is in the public right way. So the yellow, between the yellow line and the addition is just this much, so there really isn't enough to, there wouldn't be any ability to park there.
Right, so if somebody wanted to pull out a car to clean the garage or move garbage cans in or out, or wait for the door opener to work, they'd be blocking the sidewalk and
Yeah, if they, if they were actually parked off the street, they'd be in the approach and the sidewalk, right?
Right, exactly.
Now, they can not park there and they'd be fine. And again, practically, the street's wide enough for them to maneuver in and out of the garage. That's not, but the way that the ordinance is written, that, that becomes a variance situation.
And how would that affect people at that corner to see down the street if this building's up high?
Yeah, so the, yeah, they're
Because you have it down low a little bit, but that obstruct vision for your safety.
There may be a little bit there because of the topography, so you could see where they, there's a retaining wall here. So there may be, you know, a little bit of limited sight distance going west from oncoming traffic coming from the west. I don't think it would violate any of the actual, this may be give you a better perspective there.
It looks like in the past, we might have had like a double-wide storage situation too for cars, like where the trash cans are, but I know that's not necessarily our issue for today, but
Yeah, but it, but you could see the height of the trash can, so I would say a car should reasonably be able to see.
Well, yeah, and I was thinking about the garage too, but yeah.
But they have less distance to make that, make those, you know, decisions when they're pulling out. So they'd have to pull out without getting, you know, they can't just pull out fast into the street. They have to kind of ease out and
Extra attention.
Get a good sight distance there, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else, Eric?
So we are recommending, I didn't say it, we are recommending denial based on that not meeting the test for variance.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. All right. Applicant or representative of applicant. Rick, you're up to bat again.
Yep. I'm going to put this picture up again, just a second. Okay, this kind of, this kind of tells it all. I'll straighten it out. This, this garage would take care of a lot of problems. As you can see, it's really below grade. So we would take this area here, there's retaining walls on both sides, so it would kind of slide right in. So you'd only have two or three feet above, above the retaining wall now. Just, would be just above the garage door. And the idea that you could go into the side yard on the other side is just really not practical. But with this situation, kind of sliding it in, it would not be obtrusive and would provide a lot of relief. Right now, the garage floods every time we get more than about two inches of rain because of the slope, and we can alleviate that. What we're talking about is raising, raising it up just a, just a little bit so that the water could run towards the street. We've got, is it three sump pumps, Kirsten? Three sump pumps? My dau, my dau, my daughter lives in the house. And this would solve so many problems and relieve a lot of, a lot of situation because really, the, the garage is, we're, we're proposing to reduce the depth from 26 feet to 23 feet, so that would be three feet less. And it wouldn't take much more than where the retaining wall is right now. So it would be really appreciated if we could do this because it would solve so many, so many problems because the, let's face it, this house was built in 1923 for model, Model T cars. And you really, it's really not a prac, it's really not practical the way it is. And, and really, it will blend in very nicely. And we're actually have our bricklayer on the search for matching bricks so it would blend right in.
But the problem you foresee is you're creating another issue and a big problem with the amount of space that's going to be left over to be, number one, park in the driveway and back in and out.
There wouldn't be any parking in the driveway.
Right.
Even though there would be room, there wouldn't be any parking in the driveway.
So is this a rental that you have then?
No, this is my daughter's house.
Okay, she owns it, so you have control over parking in the driveway, you know the rules.
She's going to speak on her behalf as well.
Oh, I understand that.
So Rick, I understand it'd be more convenient to build the garage here like you're suggesting than you tie a walk door in probably through the existing carport.
Correct.
But as staff discussed, since you do own the property and there might be room, is there a reason why you could not build on the other side? It might not be as convenient, but is there a reason you could not?
Then you're going to have kind of two garages, plus then you couldn't have an attached garage like you could have on this. Plus, this would, this would blend in so much better the way it is, sliding it in below grade.
Yeah, I got you. Make a good case. Okay, anything else for Rick? All right, thank you, sir. Anybody want to speak in support? Yeah? You've waited plenty long enough, so.
Kirsten Hickman, this is my house, 1804 27th, my first house. I bought it three and a half years ago. Two months after I moved in, I had my first flood.
Yeah.
I have probably flooded 25 to 30 times in the last three and a half years. Last June 30th, when we had that big flood, eight inches of water. I mean, I'm constantly, it just comes down under that garage door like the way it is. So we're trying to like, just bring up, just so I'm, I'm just flooding constantly. And I can't even use my basement. So that's kind of why, I mean, I called my dad just crying and he's like, okay, let's try to, you know, do something to help you. So I know, I'm just kind of emotional about it because I'm, you know, it's like, I come home and it's like, oh, clean out more water again. And clean out more water again. How much rain we've had. Anyway, that's my support. That's all I really have to say. Any questions for me?
Questions for Kirsten? Okay.
And I'm, I live alone, I'm single. It's not like I'm going to have, you know, a bunch of vehicles, you know, trying to park, pull out. Like, we have our own garage at our office if, if I want to clean it.
Well, I thought you were going to talk about parties.
Oh, well, I have one a year and it's during Christmas. I have one a year and it's during Christmas, but, you know, there's tons of parking on the street.
If you have your own house and are single, you have more parties.
Yes, but also like Drake relays.
Yeah.
I mean, we get all the traffic from, I mean, all the traffic from there. So I mean, I deal with state track, Drake relays, you know, all kinds of stuff. So, yeah, parking during, and driving around that area during that time is not
If we were inclined to approve this, now, Des Moines does not have an ordinance about garbage cans, at least I don't think they do. But a lot of times, those can be fairly obtrusive. So if you make this really nice garage and you've got this really nice architectural door, and then you've got two garbage cans sitting right there at the curb anyway.
Oh, those, they, I'll put those in the garage, but plus under, it's also a two-car tandem underneath. So I was thinking if I
You have plenty of room under there.
So, oh yeah, it goes all the way underneath, but you can't fit a vehicle, a regular vehicle in it now. Like you said, it was, you know, 1922 brick made for Model Ts, Model As. So with the, with the garage going through, I would keep my lawn mowers, my trash cans in that part once it stops flooding, and then I would park my vehicle in the garage.
Gotcha.
So if that helps.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anybody here to speak in support? Got one more support?
Good afternoon. Todd Wiskus with Samson and Associates Architects, 1717 Ingersoll. And I've been helping Mr. Hickman with some of these, both garages, actually. So one thing I just wanted to point out that hasn't really been discussed yet is that this is a bit of a unique lot in that it's a corner lot and you know, this north side is being treated like the front of the house and the front setback. But in reality, of this house, it's the east side is the front, front of the house, the actual usable house. So I think, you know, in one way, we're kind of getting hit there. I think otherwise, a side yard setback would be seven feet, which, you know, would help our cause a lot, so. Other than that, I just want to reiterate that and I'm here to answer any questions, so.
Okay, any questions?
I'll mention to like an architectural garage door. That hadn't been mentioned. Is that what you're planning? Something that's a little more unique garage door than
Yeah, I, I thought I saw in the little drawing. It looked like we had a stylized, nice little door there.
I think that would be
Yeah, unless I was just
Sure.
Yeah, see?
Yeah, okay. I was wondering why they can't
Yeah, it kind of looks more like the old carriage house door.
Yeah, and, and as Rick mentioned, we'll do what we can to find brick that'll match the house too, so. Tie in a little bit.
Okay. All right. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anybody speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? All right, if none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Okay, what do you guys think?
If this is done right, it'll look fine. And he's going to eliminate a big problem, water coming in the house. They know they can't park outside the garage. I've seen this done in, over by Roosevelt off of Pope Boulevard. Somebody just did the same thing. And they're limited with these, with these lots, so. You know, I think, my inclination is, is let's, let's try and work some, towards some kind of a solution that's a win-win situation. It's going against a little bit of what the city wants, but this isn't a one-size-fits-all deal. We deal with that all, every meeting. I think we've got somebody here who's trying to invest in this property. And we can, I think we can help solve a problem and create a win-win deal if we approach this right. Now, I don't pretend to know what all the conditions need to be, but I think we've got a, an owner that wants to match this to the house. I think we, we can get them to work with the city on the brick. You mentioned an architectural garage door. You know, to Rick's point, I think with that retaining wall, we're not going to see a whole bunch of this garage above ground relative to what we, what the wall, what the retaining wall does right now.
I totally agree, and I think it's going to help because those wood retaining walls eventually need to be replaced. There's a big difference.
Okay.
And I think it would be also, you know, a little geothermal type warming for the garage as it is. And I think it's, I'm, I'm in favor of doing what they were asking for, especially when I heard about the flooding. Grading takes care of that and it's too stressful to have that many floods in three years. It's just wrong. So, um, do you guess?
Nathan?
Uh, I think it makes sense and I think it's practical, but the city code doesn't allow it and I don't think they've met the variance test.
From the variance test perspective, and I always like it when you put that out there, but there needs to be a hardship not of their own making here. Do you still feel that?
And, and a failure to, to yield a reasonable return from any use permitted by the regulations of the district. I mean, the city has already suggested a, an alternative for the garage placement. Even if they didn't have a garage or if they graded it and closed off the garage they have underneath, I mean, there are other, there are other ways to handle it.
You think even with the flooding? Because, I mean, it's going to hurt her if she tries to sell the house and has to disclose it's flooded 35 or 25 times. That's, that's going to hurt her, and that, that affects the value of the property greatly.
Right, but it's not sufficient merely to show that the value of the land has been depreciated by the regulations or that a variance would permit the owner to maintain a more profitable use.
He's one vote. But he's got one good principle there too. Okay, other thoughts or, and potentially now, depending on what motions could be, if somebody wants to look at making a motion to grant some kind of variance, since staff is only recommending denial here, I think earlier today, we had another garage thing that had some reasonable conditions.
Yes.
But that's the only hint I'm going to give, so.
Okay, I, unless you're going to do it, Dave, do the motion for
I'll look at you too.
We can put our heads, can we have a joint motion?
You just lead.
Okay, I, I'm going to vote that, or make a motion that we grant the variance with the stipulations that the brick is similar, not, it doesn't have to be exacting because two of the sides are going to be covered up with a lot of the land. Just maybe the front facade, and if they can't find exact, maybe something that would coordinate well with the, the garage and to have the architectural, some type of architectural garage front as shown on the drawing. And that there is no parking. I don't know if we can say there's no parking in that yard, but we know that. Or if there's a little pad there for the cement things. Okay, no, to vote that. Just say that that garbage can should be stalled inside the house or inside the garage. They aren't allowed to be out in front.
Unless they're out for pickup in accordance with the ordinance.
Twenty-four hours before or after pickup.
Right, yep, yep. Twelve hours is
Or 12 hours, whatever this usually normal
Whatever the city ordinance is.
Okay.
I think it's 12.
So I think it kind of covers the, the look, the where it's at because there's no way they can pour more than 25% cement. And as long as they fit other building permits and guidelines.
Yep.
Do you have anything to add?
Nope, that works.
Okay, so that's a motion by Lynn. Dave, is that a second by you?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh-oh, okay. So that motion fails. So when we got a three and three, then it does not pass. We don't have a simple majority. We always have to have four to make something pass anyway. So unless there would be another motion on the table, which generally speaking would need to come from one of those that voted against, then the issue's been determined. Is that correct, Lena?
Right, if there is not, there can be another motion made. If there is not another motion made, then the relief is deemed denied.
Okay. I'll, I'll just throw one little lifeline out there. The concern that I have is just, is just too close to that side street. And it is considered a front yard because it is, it is
That's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot. So I appreciate the discussion that, well, the house faces this way, but when you have two streets, you have two front, front setbacks. So that's, that's my only concern. Otherwise, I would have agreed with everything else.
Do you think the garage sits too close to the street?
Yeah, and I don't think there's any way around it. I mean, it's got to be big enough to fit a car, so.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the slot it fits in. It's like a garage there now without a roof on it.
Yeah.
Wonder if you allowed them to build a garage there and have the driveway go towards the
Front. They, they, they could potentially come back with another
I'd have them rather come off the less busy street.
They'd have to come back to us with another application then because, because that would significantly change it, correct, Lena?
But I've, I've shown so many homes in older areas where there is not enough room for a modern car.
Well, we've, we've already had a vote, so I'm, I'm just saying that's, that's one of the reasons I was opposed. So unless there'd be some significant thing, I can't see any. So I'll just let that once, twice, okay. All right, motion stands three to three. So, sorry, Rick, we, we gave you one, but not the other one today. All right, that'll bring us to item, is it 14? Do you, you guys want to take a little five-minute break? All right, we'll grant a little five-minute break in the hearing, and we will resume at 3:35.
This conditional use permit so that this section here reflects the new 3,080 square foot business. So, again, I'm not going to show you the site plan, but they do have an approved site plan to build a new gas station convenience store. Um, these photos show the existing gas station, and then the new building would kind of be located to the southwest of the building. You can see they're starting to do grading for the new store. And then this is looking to the west from South Union Street. Uh, the reason I didn't move this to the consent agenda was we had these three cards come back in opposition, so I wanted to give them a fair shake. Uh, but staff has recommended approval of the amendment to the conditional use permit, uh, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And really, the only change is that, um, it's being changed to reflect the proposed building instead of the existing building that's going to be demolished.
And the new building is smaller.
It's actually smaller, yeah.
Do you have any, do you have police reports?
Police reports? Yeah, I do.
Cause a couple of the notes reference-
And I can pass those around. Um, there are a few instances of, um, like shoplifting and robbery, and actually a few robberies, uh, but I'll pass these around.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Bert? Okay, as we review those then, uh, we'll see if we got anything later, but for now, applicant or representative of the applicant, come on down. Thank you for waiting, welcome.
Dennis Flora, 2716 Indonilla Road, owner of the Get and Go Stores. I've been at this location for 42 years and, uh, I've been selling beer and wine this, this whole time. And so I just kind of want to, you know, get that okayed. We're going to, the new building will be about 100 feet away from door to door, and we own the property behind it. It's been the zone commercial, C1 commercial, and so I just want to get the approval to, uh, just move that beer permit back.
Okay, pretty straightforward. And you're prepared to meet all the city's landscaping requirements and, and beautification and making it look snappy there? Right.
Big list.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much, Dennis. Okay, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Going once, going twice, seeing none, any further questions for staff?
I've got a quick one, sorry.
Go ahead, jump in.
So, the way this was written initially, I mean, is it important to the staff to have existing in it? Uh, existing as a adjective when we approve these conditional use permits? So when they come back that we have to do this, or is there a better way to write it? So it would say something like, "in one building for these purposes, under 4,000 square feet," or something like that?
I guess it's up to your preference. Sometimes, I guess from my perspective, I think it's good to have a clean or a second review if they ever do build a new building. I think it's good to, you know, have that opportunity to take a new look at it-
Check in.
To make sure it's still appropriate, but it's really up to you how we want to word it.
And I'm not sure if this plays into it, but at this location, at one time, Dennis, you, you guys had the little buy rights store, the mattresses or the appliances. So it might have been important to clarify at the time, the existing structure and the square footage related to it, because there were some secondary uses there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there might have been a little extra attention to detail on what part of the building. That might have just been inferred because I was familiar with it. But yeah, for future discussion, that's something staff can evaluate.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay, all right, thank you both. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and close public portion, go to board deliberation.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll go ahead and second that as a south sider. Okay. John is here.
Me too.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries six, zero. Keep improving your stores, Dennis, they look sharp. Okay, you bet, thanks for coming in. All right, item 15 is a conditional use permit at 4121 Southeast 14th Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this conditional use permit would allow for an existing restaurant to be converted to a tavern use. When the applicant came in for a pre-application conference, they indicated that they're going to be adding a pool table and other elements that might make it harder for them to meet that 50% threshold. So they did apply for a conditional use permit, so they'd no longer be held to the, uh, 50% food sales requirement. The subject property is located on the east side of Southeast 14th Street, just to the south of East Watrous. Uh, the building contains the restaurant in the south half, and then there's a limited food sales establishment in the north house, north half that has beer and wine sales. The property does meet the, um, 150-foot separation distance requirement in order to be a tavern. This is the floor plan that they've submitted. Just shows the cashier at the front and then tables, so they do intend to keep it, uh, I guess, more of a lounge-type restaurant use, so. This is just a site photo. Again, there's the limited food sales establishment in the north half of the building, and then this restaurant in the south half. We have recommended approval, uh, just subject to the standard conditions, uh, that you see on taverns. I believe we had recommended no outdoor patio unless the Board of Adjustment grants an amendment to the conditional use permit. Any questions for me?
So a portion of the building will still have the retail grocery portion, but-
Yeah.
Cat Mandu Restaurant, if I got that right, would still have food sales, but have tavern use as well.
They intend to operate as a restaurant, but they said they're going to be adding a pool table, which would, I guess, detract from-
Sure, sure, amount of food sales they can do.
Right.
Okay. And aside from the one opposition off the cul-de-sac, no other cards from the neighborhoods or-
Right.
Okay, because this is a border between Easter Lake and, um, South Park, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and the reason he said this is the other half of the building originally was a liquor store, then it left,
Right.
and then it came back as a limited food sales establishment. And now this, so this is the third time that a conditional use permit's been, um, considered as property.
Issued or given, yeah. Okay. And we've got our standard language in here about how they'll operate.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Are they proposing an entrance from the back of the property? Because that gets a little more secluded back in there, and I might have a concern about loitering.
Yeah, it looks like you have to go through the kitchen.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll let the applicant talk to that, so. Okay. All right, any questions for Bert?
It's not a conflict of interest if I go there a lot and think their food is delicious.
Right, no.
You're like a plug.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It's an endorsement.
Cross between a commercial and an endorsement here. Right, no, I, I think it's great when we do have cases in front of us, and as citizens, we're familiar with these businesses because we're people of Des Moines. You know, not wrong with knowing about a place in your neighborhood that you're frequent, or even on the other side of your town. Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and let the applicant- Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and let the applicant have the floor. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
All right, come on up. We just need your name and address, and you've got up to 10 minutes.
My name is Taku Nupani, the owner of Kat Mandu Restaurant. Home address or the business address?
Business address is fine.
4121 Southeast 14th Street. So the reason why we apply for the restaurant and the bar use is we're moving to Winter Ride, my whole restaurant, we're moving to Winter Ride. So the reason why we don't want to do a same food, we're only like nine miles each other, and 70% of my business came from that side of town. And I don't want to open two restaurants and kill myself on the South Side. I still, I still keep the food. I told my lot of customers who are from South Side, I told them, "I'm going to give you my personal cellphone, you text me through this number," and I prepare food for them. Because we don't want to do full dining experience, because that is a bar. And we have a pool table, and I have two games from Nepal, it's only play by finger, and that will be a little hard to have a dining experience on the Korean restaurant. So that's why we're trying to change back to a bar and a grill.
Right. So even with this tavern use, will you still prepare food right on the site?
Yeah, so we're still doing a full menu. We'll still keep a full menu.
Right.
The reason I don't want to, we still do like a carryout. I'll still keep them carryout, I'll do full, we do a full right now. We're not going to do the buffet, but that's going to go back to the Winter Ride.
But you'll prepare food on the site directly?
Yes, yes, we'll still do, we'll still keep a full menu.
Right.
But we don't want to do a dining.
Exactly the same thing out there and down here.
Yep, we don't want to do a dining, like, because when people drink, you know, they start making noise and, you know, they go back and forth, and it's kind of hard for customers who does dinner inside there. We start a couple of tables, because if people get hungry, they can order food and eat it.
What hours of operation will you be looking at?
We can do, Tuesday, we close Monday, we are completely closed Monday. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 4 to 12:00. And then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 3 to 1 o'clock.
Till 1 a.m. on weekends, okay.
Yeah, but we'll be there until 3 o'clock, you gotta do cleanup.
Sure, sure, but as far as customers, you'd be done serving at 1 a.m.?
Before 1 a.m., yep.
Okay, all right, okay. And you realize, and we made this statement earlier, if we give you a conditional use permit for the tavern, if there's problems with it, then we can revoke that and take that away after you've made an investment in changing things around. So as long as you're, you understand the conditions here, right? Okay, all right. And do you expect any parking of customers down behind the store?
Yeah, we have to see more parking in the back, you know, T stands.
Okay, more parking backside, okay. And that's going to be well lit, no loitering or messing around there? Okay, all right, keep it clean back there.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right, you can go ahead and sit down, thank you, sir. Okay, anybody here to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? Doesn't look like we have any. Okay, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Well, we've had a couple other conditional use permit issued here, I haven't seen a problem so far. I think this is a small location, it would allow us to keep an eye on things, and it's kind of complements their existing business next door, as well as some of their reputation they already have.
I move that we approve with the staff recommendations.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second that, so we don't put Nathan on the spot. Anybody, if there's no other comments, go ahead and vote, all those in favor of granting a conditional use permit, raise your right hand, say aye. Okay, motion carries six, zero. Okay, it's good, yep. Staff will get a copy to you next week on the approval. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 16, a variance request at 3,000 Merle Hay Road.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, another Get 'n Go, different location, 3,000 Merle Hay. This is the property with this store is owned independently of Get 'n Go, but they still operate the premises. There's a sign in question that was damaged, and the cabinet got removed from the, one of the supports on the pole sign was damaged, so they removed, the sign contractor inadvertently removed the cabinet. I think it was their full intention not to do that, but it happened nevertheless. So the current situation is they have a sign with one, there's one support, you can see the other support is truncated, so to speak. Then this is the pricing on the one support that's left there. That's kind of the condition, and this is a little closer looking from the other direction. The intent of our freestanding overlay district is to, through attrition, basically require signs to become monument signs. I know this was an accidental situation, and from their standpoint, there really isn't any allowance for that, whether it's accidental or not, when it's looking at the FSO. So it becomes a variance situation. Staff looks at this site, and we believe there's opportunity to provide the, a sign that would comply with the freestanding overlay as well. It might trim a little bit of some of the pavement area, but I think that the maneuvering would still function within the site to make that happen. This site actually would earn two freestanding signs if they, you know, modified it. I think monument sign right in the canopy area probably doesn't really function that well for the way the site currently lays out, but the corner certainly is available. From staff's perspective, it just does not meet the variance test for them to go back and put this cabinet back on with a new support. Again, the fact that the support was failing is really, the intent of the code is when these signs start to have attrition, that we replace them. And so rather than replace it with a brand-new support that's going to be there for years, the idea is that we get them to replace it with a sign that complies. So that's where we're coming from.
And Eric, they would be allowed to put some signage on the canopy, is that correct?
They earn signs, so the way that the sign earnings work is that they can apply portions of their earnings from the building on the canopy.
Right, okay.
Not to exceed a certain amount, but they're definitely allowed to do that in the way the code is written. So there's specific allowance of that for gas stations.
Yeah, I'm not saying how convenient or accessible it would be for them to put their pricing sign on the canopy, but theoretically, if they met certain requirements, they could, right?
Yeah, and we have that situation in certain stores, not, I don't know if they're Get 'n Go stores, but yes, that's allowed, and they could get, I don't know if it forces them to redesign.
An employee can't walk up and hand-change it, I get that, but.
No, in fact, I think we've got a scenario where they're changeable, where they're the electronic.
Yes.
This is a C1 zoning district, so the electronic wouldn't be allowed.
As well, okay, I got you. All right, any other questions for Eric? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Dennis, you back up, sign guy?
What, Tom?
Oh, okay.
He had a law.
Yeah.
Chair, members of the board, Thomas Moreford, project manager, Get 'n Go Convenience Stores Incorporated, 2716 Indianola Avenue. This particular store at 3,000 Merle Hay, due to the very extreme weather conditions we had over the winter, I, we displaced the snow, and it caused damage to the left column. I know it's not totally possible for us to comply with the criteria for loss of value and things of that nature, but I would like to state that it's an approximately, it had been there fully erect, in pristine condition, with a value of around $10,000. It's going to cost us approximately $20,000 to put a monument sign in. The, we have a location just up the street on Urbendale Ave that we've put money into in an attempt to allocate funds to a lot of our 47 stores that we have. And it just seems to be a hardship in our eyes that we have to dispose of a $10,000 perfectly good sign that was truly inadvertently taken down when it could have just been stabilized until I could have gotten complete repair of that pole sign. The only other thing I would point out, and Eric did quite well by displaying the site itself, there are no monument signs anywhere up and down Merle Hay or Urban, Urbendale. And other than us being in the fold of both streets, the eight-foot limit on the elevations kind of, in our eyes, would maybe restrict a little bit of, as you know, Des Moines traffic being a little bit excessive in speed, an opportunity to see our pricing and get turned in. So we just appeal to the board, you know, with the point of getting a good return on investment, which we don't want to lose the $10,000 perfectly good sign that we can't use in Des Moines, but that sign that was erect, we don't want to erect a new sign, it was there, we just wanted to repair the one that was there. So that's what I have.
Okay, questions for Tom? Okay, all right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Come on up.
Chair, members of the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the City of Des Moines. The ordinance is quite clear that if a sign is destroyed by whatever means, it needs to be replaced with a monument sign. We are attempting, especially on Merle Hay corridor, to get less clutter and start to install more monument signs on this corridor, as well as all over the city. So I would argue and urge the board to not allow them to put the pole sign back up, but to put in the required monument sign.
Thank you, Sue Ann. Okay, anybody else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, since there was opposition, if you guys want to counter Sue Ann Donovan, you're welcome to, if you don't want to, you don't have to. Sure, you've sat patiently all afternoon.
There'd just be two points that I'd like to make, again, to reiterate that the sign was in absolute pristine condition and the extreme weather conditions we had from January 12 through March were really the cause of this. I do understand the freestanding ordinance that was implemented in June of 2000 for the City of Des Moines. I will state that when the expansion of Merle Hay was done, I think approximately 10 years ago, even though that freestanding ordinance was in effect for a decade or so, we were allowed by the city just to have that sign moved over at the time. So it was still applicable in that freestanding ordinance while that freestanding ordinance was in place. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, you're welcome, Tom. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public portion, then I go to board deliberation.
Maybe should have asked, would insurance cover any of that?
Go ahead, let's just talk a lot here.
I probably should have asked, would insurance cover any of this?
My insurance.
Can you please come, yes, please.
It's okay.
In speaking, I haven't gotten to an adjuster portion of it, but in speaking with my agent from Independent Insurance, Pat, he suggested that without knowing the damage or the structure of the actual west column that had failed, that it may be, but he didn't know, I guess, so I can't answer that yes or no, but he did suggest that it might be a little bit of a, an argument with the underwriters without knowing what was actually there prior to the conditions that caused the failure of that west column. I will say, with the 60% note of damage to the sign or what the ordinance states, there's absolutely no damage to the advertisement portion of the sign. And when Eagle Sign was requested to go and stabilize it so it didn't create a potential hazard for pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic, either I didn't convey or it was misunderstood. I did not want it removed at all. I just want it stabilized until weather permitted, and then I would be able to straighten it and fabricate and completely repair it onsite, without removing any of the advertisement portion of the sign.
Okay, all right, thanks, Tom.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, we'll go back to board deliberation here. I might lead off on this one, because there are two areas of this city that really exhibited the necessity for why we passed this freestanding overlay sign ordinance to try to get a handle on pole signs and start looking at converting them. One of them, Southeast 14th, the other one is Merle Hay corridor. And like Tom said, yeah, there's no monument signs on Merle Hay. Well, of course not, that's because there's a bunch of freestanding pole signs up and down the street. But as new development has happened, including up at Merle Hay and Douglas, Rich Eichner's properties, I think those all came in within the new ordinance, which is about five years old now, 2015, 14?
2014 or 15.
Yeah, and I know it can put folks in a bind sometimes, what I always say is your sign company should know the ordinance as well as you should. So sometimes there may be discussions you need to have intensely with your contractors about if somebody does or didn't do something that violated the zoning ordinance. That's all I'll say about that. But we've got to have a pretty firm stand here on these things. I know it's always costly to meet new ordinances and requirements, more so than to fix or keep what you've got. But financial reasons alone, especially under these kinds of things, aren't a defense. I mean, I understand, I'm a person like everybody else. But we need to find a way to start converting our corridors and have good businesses like yours operate in the corridor, but start bringing down these 25-foot-tall signs. And if the sign came down, in my opinion, the sign's gone. You don't even need a monument sign. Put Get 'n Go on your canopy, people know where you're at. Get your name on your canopy. But I know you want to put your address or your pricing on the, you want to have that out there. Now, when you build a new canopy, you can wire for it. When it's pre-existing, I know that's tougher. But I'm, I got to take a firm stand on this. There's good people in that Merle Hay neighborhood that stood up in front of the council time and time again, like Jason Pulliam, neighborhood president, and they've said, "We've got to bring these signs under control up here." So I've, I got to support staff on denial here, as much as I love Get 'n Go, and you guys know I do.
No, I have to agree with you that Merle Hay Road does need a change. It does look very retro with all the signs going up, and as I've driven down the floor more often with the monument signs, it is looking nicer to have all the monument signs. It does look a little bit classier. And, you know, being the first one, you can set the bar for everybody and how good their signs are going to be. I'd always rather be first than last. So I'm going to support staff on this and not support the variance.
All right, so I'm going to call mine a motion, then, yours is a second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, if there's any other discussion, certainly entertain that before we vote. Seeing none?
I just think it's unfortunate what caused it.
Yeah, no, I, I.
There's nothing you can do about the ordinance.
I totally get that.
It's just, yeah.
Can you find a way to file a claim on your insurance? Great, somehow, I don't know. Okay, so, all those in favor of staff recommendation, which would be denial of the appeal, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, six, zero. Okay, all right. My gas tank's about empty, I know where I'm stopping on the way home. Okay, all right. Item 17, a conditional use permit request, 2275 Hubbell. All right. Item 17, a conditional use permit request, 2275 Hubble Avenue.
Mr. Chair Members of the Board, this item is similar to the Main Gate Tavern in that there is an existing tavern that predates the conditional use permit requirements, and now wants to add a patio. So in order to expand the existing tavern, they have to get a conditional use permit for both the tavern and their proposed expansion. The subject property is located along the east side of Hubble Avenue. It used to be the Johnny Max's Bar that, as you probably remember, had shooting and some other issues there. So Johnny Max closed, but a new owner bought the property and has turned it into the Gym Party Bar, and they want to add a patio on the east side of the building. So here's a floor plan that shows generally where the patio would be. It would be on that angled portion of the building that fronts East 23rd Street. And then this sketch they submitted just shows the existing layout of the bar. Again, this is to the north, so the door here would exit out to the patio on the east side of the building. These photos will hopefully help clarify things. This is Hubble Avenue back here, so the sidewalk in the front of the picture is the sidewalk along East 23rd Street. You can see that the area contains a lot of broken up asphalt right now. That's not really used for anything. This city right-of-way here between the sidewalk and the curb along East 23rd Street has also been paved over. So as I'm going to mention soon, one of our conditions of approval is that these excess paved areas be removed and restored with sod. But you can also see in the photo where the patio would be. They have constructed a fence around this area, which is allowed, but in order to have alcohol service out here, they have to get the conditional use permit for that area. And again, here's another photo of the patio. You can see the curb along East 23rd Street and then the sidewalk, and then the property line is generally just inside the sidewalk. This is just another photo of the north end of the building. Then this is taken along Hubble Avenue. You can see it is built right up to the front property line along Hubble, so really their only opportunity for an outdoor patio would be along the east side of the building. And this is just another photo further down the street. And here is the consent map. We did get some cards in support, some cards in opposition. And then I guess I wanted to mention too, that directly across from the patio is the parking lot for the existing tavern. This area here is paved. This area to the north here is gravel. I'm not sure if they have legal, non-conforming rights to use that, but I guess my understanding is that they at least have this paved parking lot here. So by having a patio here, it's not, like it's directly across from any residential uses. Staff does believe that bringing the existing tavern under the conditional use permit requirements is beneficial because as it stands now, if there are any problems, there's no conditional use permit that the city can pull on this property. But by getting a conditional use permit for the existing tavern and for the proposed patio, then in the future, if there would be problems, both the conditional use permit could be subject to reconsideration. So we have recommended approval subject to 10 conditions. I'll just focus on the two that really aren't the standard. One is that any excess paving on the property and within the adjoining right-of-way shall be removed and restored with sod to the satisfaction of the city's planning administrator. And then number four is that the, the business shall comply with this noise ordinance. However, there should be no outdoor speakers or amplified sound on the premise at any time. So...
Good call on that, because I was going to ask about, hey, we got some asphalt out there in the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the curb yet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything for Bert? Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Applicant or representative of the applicant? Afternoon, Larry. Thank you for waiting.
Wow.
Back row seat. Watch the proceedings.
My name is Larry Smith, and I live at 1595 Copper Creek Drive. I'm here today because I have applied for a conditional use permit to have the outdoor service on a patio at the 2279 Hubble for a bar called The Gym. I guess I'm a little concerned with the way the city presented this today, or the staff. It sounds more like a, you know, hey, we would like to okay this so if we, we can jerk their license later. I, I find that very problematic and a very conflict, big conflict of interest. I, however, obtained this location about a year ago, and the bar has lots of history. And I don't think anybody can compare the history this bar's had to the history that my family's had in the bar business. No shootings, no stabbings. Everybody's got a little punch in the nose or something that happens, but we run very good establishments. We went in and we cleaned up what was a filthy bar, and I mean extremely filthy. And we've repainted it. We've tried to do everything nice. We wanted, the reason we started out wanting to get this fence is because we really didn't want the motorcycles to be able to park next to the building, okay? Because it was really a lot of a motorcycle bar. And I'm not knocking motorcycles or saying people that ride motorcycles are bad, but there's quite a group of them that, I, I don't know, it's something about when they go outside, if it's close to where they can see somebody, it's rev up and, and look at me. And so we thought if we took the immediate parking, they're close to the building, it would give us a little bit more of a chance to be able to control the situation. We also wanted to create a place where the people could smoke and that we could put them in a contained area to where we would have a little bit more of authority with what was going on, to where they're not just standing in front of the doorway and all over the parking lot, the parking lot across the street. Now what we're saying is, hey, you know, you can smoke in this area. Don't be in the other areas. We have put a sign up, and I'm going to call it our front, but it's really kind of the rear, the entrance to the building. We've already put a sign up now that says, you know, no loitering here, no smoking here. Off to the side toward, would be the south, there is the canopy that's the main entrance, and then there's an overhead door where there has been a shop in this building at some time. I wouldn't want, I, I'm in complete agreeance with everything that they have asked for, for the, the recommendations for us to do. The only thing I don't want to do is on number two, we referenced the asphalt's a little bit in bad shape. I, I will agree with that. I, I will get that repaired. But I would like to leave that for parking if needed because I don't want to have a problem with parking for neighbors. The park, the asphalt on the other end, obviously, we need because it's to the entrance and it's to the overhead door. As far as you can see, as it was referenced, our asphalt in poor shape. On the other side of the sidewalk, it looks like everything's in poor shape, and that's the city's. I have no problem with getting an approach poured. When I went down and asked to get this fence permit, they told me that I couldn't block this drive area that you see right there in the street at the lower part of this picture. And they said because they wanted to leave that for parking, that definitely still had to stay parking. Now all of a sudden, I'm hearing something different. I have no problem with getting a nice cleaner approach, concrete approach poured there to make that a little nicer. I have no problem having that dug up in front, and whatever we need in for dirt and the sod, I think would make it look nicer too. I'm all about that. I think anybody in the neighborhood, and I'm sure there's probably going to be a little rebuttal or something, but we're definitely running a nicer spot that was there. We built this as kind of in a step-by-step process, and we, we want it to be a nice bar. And I think the east side people are entitled to a nice bar. And I think the nicer you make it by doing a patio, you know, the nicer people you're going to get. I, I think it's that simple. If there's any questions, I can answer. As you can see, the new sidewalk, we put about $10,000 with the new sidewalk around the property between the front and the back, and we're really trying to make it as nice as we can. So I'm here today to ask you to please approve this. I would, however, though, as we keep hearing the sound things, I get it. I wouldn't want to have something next to me that was an annoyance either. However, many times, many times, your complaints that you receive are from customers that have been banned, well, we're trying to clean a place up, and well, good, we're going to cause you a problem, okay?
Sure.
Or competitors in the neighborhood. So I would just hope that if you come after any of the establishments, not just mine, you would start giving merit to where these complaints are coming from.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I have a question for that triangular area that's asphalt. What were you planning to do with that again?
What was that?
You said that the, that the, number two was that you wanted to do that area that we were asking for you to turn back into sod?
Well, right in front of the fence area, this way coming, the picture coming toward the front.
Yeah.
There's an area there on the end that has a driveway from the street coming up that allows about four cars to park there. I would like to be able to maintain that.
Larry, is it in the picture there that's up on the screen? Can you point to that? If it's in the picture up on the screen? Yeah. Can you point to this paving you want to keep?
We're talking this area right here.
Okay.
And then, as you can see from the picture, that was up, the drive comes in down here. So this was the parking area. There's actually not a drive over the curb like you see on a bunch of this, where there's actually the approach and a proper drive coming up into this area. There's about, like I said, there's room for here to park about four cars.
So you'd make it look like a, a nice parking lot and stepway, as somebody's jumping to curb to park?
I'm sorry, I saw it here.
Do, do you plan to improve it yet, even if you want to keep it for parking? Are you going to put some new asphalt down or?
Yes.
Put in a better drive approach?
We'll, we'll put new, we'll put new asphalt up there.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. I, I don't want to leave it crumbling like that.
Sure.
Like I said, this has been a step-by-step process, trying to keep making things better.
And I think, Larry, to, to go to that point number two, that the staff's talking about removing the excess paving, in that other picture that was up, where your new sidewalk is between there and the curb, that's actually public property, and that can't be used for parking or maneuvering. So like, Bert, can you point to that? Yeah, so, so like that, that part would need to come out.
You know, I agree with that.
Yeah, right.
I agree with that.
So what I would suggest with the number, the number-two bullet point, if we're inclined to approve this, I would want to keep that in there, but then you sit down and work it out with the city planning staff because reasonable space for maneuvering and parking can be allowed. But then they can hatch out what needs to go, and that, you're, you're probably going to be about on the same page on that.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think that's the only...
I think, I have no idea whoever put the asphalt in there between the walk and the curb.
It goes back.
It, it, it looks terrible.
Yes.
And there is no parking allowed there. I don't want the people illegal parked there. There, there, this 23rd Street, there's something about it coming from Hubble to University is a big cut-through area. AE, motorcycles, people in the area. So part of that noise and stuff that comes rumbling through, there's really nothing to do with this. But I want it to look as nice as we can.
I totally agree. And I'm, I'm not here to defend city staff, but as far as I'm ganging up on you about trying to yank your permit if we give you one, remember that I'm the one that said earlier today to that other guy, now if you got a conditional use permit, we're, we're giving you enough rope. Don't get yourself tangled up. And I think you've always understood that, but...
I agree with that 100%. I, I, and, and when I'm saying this to protect myself, I'm saying it to protect Frank too. I, I think there just needs to be some merit to where the complaints are coming from.
Sure, sure. And, and that's what we always try to look at here. Yeah, okay. Gotcha. Any other questions for Larry?
How late are you open, and are you expecting to have people on the patio until closing time?
There will be people on the patio until closing time.
Which is when?
Uh, 1:45, 1:30.
Okay.
And here's, here's the thing. I really have a lot more control. The people is out there smoking anyway. This is really a big advantage to everybody involved. Neighbors, city, myself as the owner. This gets us in a controlled area to where they're not, they're going to be out there smoking anyway. I have pictures that, if I didn't like rebuttal that I have here. Every bar on the east side has picnic tables. They have, there's a bar on Hubble that had a band play last Friday, had a band play the Friday before. I guarantee they had no sound permit. I guarantee they have no, haven't been in front of the variance, and it's, it's going on all over. I'm really trying to do it the right way. I'm trying to put it in a fenced area to where we can control it, make it right, and I will take responsibility for it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Okay. Seeing none. Anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. She's up for bid. Okay. Come on down. Thank you for, thank you for waiting patiently this afternoon.
Patience is gone, honey.
Okay.
Patience is gone.
Well, let's start with your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
I don't even need this. My name is Marva Beatty. I live at 1252 East 23rd.
Okay.
I have put up with that. Got off a bar for lots of years. It used to be a laundromat. We didn't ask a bar to come in. We got a bar in there after many years. We called constantly to Johnny Max. You've got noise. You've got problems. Do something. It's not our problem. Hello, it is your problem. Hang up. Okay, turn around. A gun shooting. It's not their problem. It was in their parking lot. I don't have children, but thank God I don't. They'd have been shot. I want nothing to do with that bar. I've never been to that establishment, and I never will.
Okay.
It's like, money talks, poor people walk. And that's exactly what's going to happen here with this place today. Nothing is going to be done. He's going to get his bar, and I'm going to have to put up with the noise. He put in that fence before this was ever They've had games and stuff going out there. That didn't go over. I want nothing to do with it. I want a quiet neighborhood. Yes, I've got motorcycles. I can't control that. They're coming from all the bars, all three of them. I've got the trucks 24/7 from AE. 25 mile an hour speed limit, that ain't happening either, honey. 50 miles an hour. You can put a drone car, ain't going to do you any good. Do you know why? The media tells them where that drone car is. Okay, I've shared my piece. My blood pressure's now high, and you're going to let him have it anyway. So I'm PO'd. PO'd so bad. If I matter of our taxes on your, your consciousnesses.
We are here to...
By the way, I am 70 years old.
And we are here to take input and listen to all citizens and consider all sides of the issue before we make any decision. So I appreciate you coming down and sharing your thoughts with us. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition? Come on down.
Tiffany Glass at 1257 East 23rd. And I am concerned about the noise level. I'm concerned about the fact that this is a residential neighborhood, and the previous bar has had no dis, has had no regard, and the patrons have had no regard for the fact that it is a residential neighborhood, with motorcycles revving up and running down the street and being very loud, and the fact that, you know, it's a, it's a school night or a weeknight, and they're still very loud, the, the fights that have gone on. You know, you call the police and nothing much really happens. So I'm very concerned about the noise level. And, yeah, I have two jobs. You know, I drive a school bus through the school year, and I also drive charter bus. So sometimes I have to be up at like really crazy hours to go and, and get, either go get a bus from Ames and, and go transport people. Like, Friday I've got to be up in some crazy hour to go to Walcott to go get a bus with military personnel and take them back to Pocahontas, Iowa. So if it's really loud, you know, that's kind of a problem.
Tiffany, can you show me where you live on this map here relative to the place? Does your house show up on here?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, it's down there to your right. Yep.
I am probably like, oh, I'm next to, it says Russell Johnson, so I'm right next to Russell Johnson.
Okay, okay. I've got you. All right. Have you, and how long have you lived there?
Forever.
Forever. Okay. I'm not going to ask how long that is. You're not that old. Have you seen any difference in the last year or so? I think Larry had said that his management or ownership has been in recent time, not when these other problems had happened.
It has been, well, it, it doesn't, I've been paying attention to whether the bar is open or not.
Yeah.
And Ben's like, well, you open or not? And it's like...
Okay.
So, so I can't...
I mean, is it maybe not as bad as it used to be in recent time?
Right now it's not, but summer's coming up, so, you know, with that coming up, and if you're saying, hey, we're open and bringing... if you're saying, hey, we're open and bringing in more and more and new, maybe new patrons and a better clientele, you know, hopefully that improves. But I am still concerned about, about the motorcycles coming in being loud.
Are you a member of your neighborhood association for that area?
Probably not.
I, I would really suggest that, that you act at neighborhood?
I've never attended.
Okay.
I get, I get like a flyer.
Because you have a busy schedule. Yeah. But the reason I mention that is the neighborhood associations work closely with the police department. The police department assigns a neighborhood service officer. So a lot of times they can build that rapport with owners of establishments. They can make sure if there are problems and issues before they get to where we have, you know, murders, that they can get a handle on it. Because I don't like seeing people get frustrated over many years, if not decades, on this stuff. So the better folks can work ahead of time. We prevent it number one with good owners, but if there is a problem, then those folks can work with our zoning people as well as the police department and get a handle on it. But I don't like to see it get to that. It doesn't need to get to that stage, but, but, but that is a very good avenue to get ahead of the curve on these things is through your neighborhood association, through the service officer at the police department and then our zoning folks. So I would encourage you to do that, so.
The next meeting is two weeks from tonight.
Okay. This lady knows.
He's sidestepping here, so. Um, the other place, if you can't make it to the meeting, your neighborhood officer's name, as you go to the Des Moines city website, you look up my house, the name and phone number of the police officer for your area will be right there also.
Okay, very good. Okay, how do we get, how do we do it after?
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll have one of our staff members visit with you all and, and they can point you to who, who your neighborhood officers are and who the president is. Marla, who's the president right now?
The city of Des Moines has been there, like I said before, we've had prostitutes and we had the police sitting down for drugs. Because they were selling drugs in there. We had a meth house.
It's a previous owner.
I mean, come on.
Yeah.
What does it take?
Okay.
The city of Des Moines did a good job.
There are things that the board can do here relative to the issues in front of us. I understand your frustration with some of these other things, but, but, but our jurisdiction is pretty much the case we got in front of us today. So, thank you for your input, Tiffany. Much appreciated. Okay, anybody else here to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Larry, you can have a rebuttal here.
I'm going to try to make it really quick. I think these people that just spoke are all right. I think the neighbors, there's probably another 30 out there that feel the same way they do. I think their hate and their frustration is on the bar before me. I think you heard the one lady try to say, yes, it's better than it was. I don't even plan on being opening on a lot of days after the slower days. Right now I've been focusing on the Friday, Saturday. Like I said, this has been kind of step at a time. We're going to be adding food shortly. I, I, I agree with, I agree with all their complaints and I, I think they're 100% right with everything they've said about all the drugs involved, the meth place, the on and on. I, I can't say enough about the past bar myself, okay? But I just don't want that taken out on me and I'm sure you can see that and I, I hope they'll visit with me and I'll try to work them, with them whatever way I can.
Okay.
Thanks.
Larry, I'm not a big bar person, but I think you've been before, you own other bars, do you?
I'm sorry.
Maybe? This isn't like, this isn't like your first, an only forage into running a bar, is it?
I don't know.
She, she asked if you own some other bars.
Quite a few.
Okay, yeah, so you're not, you're not a novice trying out for the first time. You've, you've been down this rodeo, you know how to handle people.
I try to tell you, owning bars, if I can take, give a few seconds of, of speaking on this, is the hardest thing you can want to do. It's very simple to be a policeman. Me and policemen laugh about that all the time. You know what? We like fun people, we like respectful people, we do the best we can to not have to deal with the other people and to keep them out of our establishments. And it is a tough job, but we do it and we stand up to it and we'll continue to stand up to it. And I'll tell you what, if I can't make it the type of bar I want it to be and be proud of it, I won't be there. They won't need to be worried about trying to push me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public portion, then I go to board deliberation.
I guess I'm the talker.
Current or former East Siders, speak up.
Yeah, um, no, I, I'm fine with his changing the paving to the front, you know, one of the comments was mentioned, those people parking in their neighborhoods having a couple extra spaces is probably a good idea. I think his rationale between having the patio in a way to control the people who are smoking, kind of enclosing them to, you know, one way in and out of the patio is through the bar and people are observing it. And just the fact, I know he's run other places, this is not his first time, kind of knows what to handle, that I'm along with, inclined to go along with the permit and just changing the part about replacing the area with sod, just maybe upgrading the landscaping as discussed with city council or something. Oh, Sue Ann has something to add, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, chair members of the board.
Go ahead.
We're talking about the excess parking and number two, and I think that's what you were trying to get at.
Yes.
We would appreciate if there's a sketch that we could look, look at and work with so we can get the setbacks and the approaches the way they're supposed to be on that area.
Yeah, as far as have Larry provide that to you.
So we can determine what is excess, right?
Yes, yes.
So that goes along with that.
Since that, yeah, since that needs to be done to the satisfaction of the city's planning administrator anyway, if he wants a sketch, he should be able to ask for one. So Larry, are you okay with putting together a, a scaled sketch to show where you want your maneuvering parking? Okay, all right.
So those are my thoughts.
All right, so is that, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
And then under item number two, there'll be a sketch provided of current and proposed parking.
A sketch in approval.
Yeah. All right, is there a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like unanimous. Yeah, sorry, it was made by Lynn, seconded by Dave, so. All right. Larry, you keep your good word, you keep making that place better, work with the neighborhood, have a grill out night and, and mail out to five blocks around and have them come down.
Be a deal or something like that.
Thank you. All right. That'll bring us to item 18, a special permit request at 1517 East Park Avenue.
You want to have a press?
Can, yeah, Bert or Catherine help out on that one? Okay. Catherine, help. Yeah, don't put me on the spot.
Thank you. Okay, pretty clear.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is a request for home occupation to allow a federal firearms license to be issued to the occupant of the, the home. This is a property that's just east of East 14th Street. In fact, you can see in the aerial, the Hy-Vee at East Park and Southeast 14th Street, just three properties over. They do own the vacant parcel to the west of them. It's not developed with anything but, looks like maybe there's a carport back there or something behind a fence. This is the subject property from the street view. And then adjoining vacant property, this was only noticed based on the property with the house, which is where they're planning to conduct the business. My understanding is that their primary reason for requesting this is to allow them to have a business which repairs guns and this would be outside of their normal day job situation. Their intent is to work with appointments in the evening and, you know, after hours, but not later than eight o'clock in the evening. They would have to provide a valid federal firearms license, which if you understand how those are, the ones for gunsmithing are a little bit different, but they still require them to have the ability to sell firearms as well. I'm not sure, you have to ask the applicant what their intentions are for the volume of that. Their, their application didn't really speak to a, a large number of sales that would be tied to that, although they would be allowed to have sales if they were issued You've had a couple of these recently. I'm going to give you the, show you the sketch that they provided of the interior. They do plan to use one single area of their property for the business. Up in the front, it's kind of a split foyer design, so they would be on that upper level on the front northeast or northwest corner of the property. Staff is looking at this very similarly that, to how we've looked at a couple of other recent requests. There are some limitations that, that we have to observe based on the federal law, which dictates some elements of this, but we're, we believe as long as this isn't an intrusion with a lot of customer traffic, that this won't be an impediment to the neighborhood. So we're recommending approval of the special permit subject to that this be a business that's clearly incidental to their single-family use of the property. At this time, they're not offering any non-resident individuals, so at this point in time, we recommend that it be limited to that. If that changes in the future, I think they could come back and ask for that to be adjusted with the board. No sign, I don't believe they're proposing a sign. The occupation shall not cause or produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or heat. They did indicate some of the repair would involve a welding, possibly, that their welder would be in their garage, not in the house. So, which I don't think we would advise them to try to do that inside the house as well. And I don't know if that's a huge component of gun repair, but it, it probably comes off, comes about every once in a while.
How does that square with the requirement that it has to be limited to one half of one floor in one building?
Well, I guess that's up to the board to decide if that's within the spirit of it, to take that one element of the welding to their garage, which is where the safe and prudent location would be, but.
Where's the safe going to be?
Uh, I didn't say anything about the safe.
All right, okay, all right. Don't worry about it, I'll ask him.
They didn't offer that information. My sense is, is that they were.
The house.
Keeping that within the confines of the portion of the, the house that they're locating the business. But they didn't specifically say where the safe would be. We're recommending that they have the safe as a condition. We don't want any alteration to the residence to change the residential appearance, hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then that falls within, their intentions are actually probably after work to 8:00 PM. I don't think we're going to get into whether he works on something in the quiet of the night inside the house, but in terms of bringing anybody here.
Sure.
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Home occupation, including business storage, shall not displace or impede use of parking. If you saw in the photo, it looked like there was adequate parking in the driveway. There's no parking allowed on East Park Street adjoining the property, so there wouldn't be any street, if people were looking to park on-street, they'd be quite a ways away, honestly, so everything would need, would really have to occur on the property. The home occupation shall not cause congregation of business employees. Again, he's not asking for any additional employees other than himself. Only, only in effect for as long as they own and occupy the premise. If this becomes a nuisance for the neighborhood, that it shall be subject to consideration. We do want to make sure, there was a comment from our fire department, there is some limitations in the new fire codes about like the primers, storage and some of the materials that may be involved. We want to make sure they're keeping within those thresholds. Those, those are something that haven't been parts of the code in the past, so. They did pass that comment along that they want to make sure. In fact, I think in the staff body of the staff report, it was indicated what those limitations were. 20 pounds of explosive material, which would be powders, and then 50 pounds of the, I'm sorry, 20 pounds causes them to have to have it listed with the fire department. They aren't allowed to exceed 50. They also aren't allowed to have more than 10,000 pieces of primer, which, those are the little, if you don't know what the primer are, those are the little piece that ignites the ammunition, so. And they are explosive on their own and stored in large quantities, so that, that's a concern of the fire department. Any firearms awaiting delivery or personal firearms not being carried shall be stored in the dwelling in a lock safe designed for firearms so long as the storage meets the federal firearms license requirements. So, again, you might ask them if you have, want to know specifically where that would be located. I presume it's going to be within the shop, but that may, that may be something different than, that wasn't specifically indicated in their application, so. We did get the card from the one owner, that's two properties but one owner.
All right, questions for Eric? All right, easy enough for now. Thank you for a good presentation, Eric. All right, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Good afternoon. My name's Kenneth McDaniel, 1517 East Park Avenue. I'm the one that's applying for the special permit. I have a full-time job, day, day job. This is a part-time business. I'm a certified gunsmith and as you saw. Picture here of the, of the layout of my house where the gunsmith shop is. It's downstairs in the front part of the building. I, I purchased a, a safe yesterday, so I do have a 15-gun safe for this purpose and it's located right there.
Very good, okay.
All, all the, the ATF is who, all the demands and everything for gunsmithing, gun sales is all through the ATF, so I have to abide by their rules and regulations. I have not applied for the, for the FFL yet because this is part of the stipulations. I have to have all these, if there's any special permits, I have to have those before I can apply for it, so. This is a part-time job. I won't be, everything's by, going to be by appointment only and it's going to be after I get home from work, which is usually between three and four o'clock in the afternoon till 8:00 PM maximum, so. Any questions for me?
I'll just lead off with one. So a lot of businesses like what you're doing, you know, kind of a part-time, I'm sure you enjoy it, number one, that's why you do it. Is this mostly through word of mouth and referrals for your, how you cultivate customers?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So there's no ad in the Des Moines Register or anything that says?
No advertisements.
East Park Avenue? Okay.
No advertisements, no signage?
Sure.
Just by word of mouth?
Right.
Business card and that's it.
And as far as the welding is concerned, I'm assuming if you need to weld a receiver or a scope mount or something, it'd be incidental, take it out to my garage, weld it, bring it back in?
Correct.
So you wouldn't have a lot of tools or equipment just specific to firearms, gunsmithing in the garage? It would mostly all be in the house?
All the tools I have right now are in the basement, in the gun shop, gunsmith shop.
So most of it would be incidental and infrequent to be out in the garage for anything related to your gunsmithing?
Yes.
Okay.
The welding type is TIG welding, which I have to use, after that, I have to use a torch to, to heat treat the metal after I get it done welding it, so.
Yeah. That's a skill I do not have, but I'm very in awe of people who can do that.
Takes a lot of practice.
That's why you're a gunsmith. Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions for Kenneth? Okay, all right, thank you, sir, and go ahead and sit down. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, any further questions for staff? Okay, if none, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. I'll just throw out there, we've had, I can count, the decade plus I've been on this board, we've had over a dozen to twenty of these come in front of us, never had a problem with one of them, with these reasonable conditions, which I think staff as well as the board have helped develop over time, to make sure it's incidental, it's safe, and from what I know, a gunsmith is the safest person I'd wanna have a firearm half, so, I think we approved one of these a couple months ago with very similar conditions.
So is that a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve it, subject to staff rec. Seconded by Marla's. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries five to one. So you are approved, we'll get with you next week, Kenneth, on that, we'll go from there. You'll get a decision in order, that'll be signed by the staff, then you can provide that to the BATF. Okay, all right, thank you for hanging out for four hours today. You bet, have a good evening. Okay, item nineteen is a variance request at fourteen hundred Des Moines Street.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this property is addressed off of Des Moines Street, but you might know it a little bit better as being on East Fourteenth Street, just off of Interstate 235 and South of East High School, it is the McDonald's located on the corner here. They are before us because they wanna update their signs for their drive-through area. And here's just a couple of quick images of what the signs they're looking to install will look like, and then a little bit of context from the site itself, that's from the street, which is kind of part of why we're here with you today, and again, a little bit further down the street, and then this is a little bit up close, not from the street, obviously, and as shown, the signs that they're looking to install are going to have, gonna be menu boards, and they're going to be lit. They are proposing to install them on one-foot-tall metal posts rather than our monument signs that we require with the freestanding overlay district. Don't know that there's really much else I need to tell you per se, that, other than that staff is recommending denial of the variance that they're requesting to the freestanding monument sign definition, but we are recommending approval of the, their request to allow the additional signs. Right now, they earn one of these signs, and they're asking for three, and as you can tell from their configuration, it would be reasonable to allow them to have all four of the signs that they're asking for. We would just like to see them on a monument base made out of a durable material. We had just a few conditions that went along with the approval of allowing the additional signs, again, just that they would need to be of a monument-based style. Licensed contractor would do the installation, and then any electronic display signs installed shall meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and I think I already dropped the consent map, but just to show that we had one card in support from the nearby neighbor saying that they did not have a problem with the updated signs.
Can you show, maybe you did and I was reading, but can you show where the menu boards are on the property?
So, again, that's what they would look like, and then they are located at the rear of the building, back here. They do have an entrance located here, but this one does tell you, have signage that does say if you're going to, you can't get to the drive-through from this point, so then you do have to circle the property, and then they've got one other entrance here off of Des Moines Street as well.
And the four signs, three of them are menu, and one of them is?
Well, they're all menu or pre-order menu boards.
Oh, okay.
And then, just because they have the two drive-through lanes before you converge before the payment.
But the signs are literally like back there by the parking lot?
Correct, well, yeah, the parking lot surrounds the property, but then here's the neighboring parking lot, and so.
So Nathan, it's like the signs that are up on FLUR Drive?
Which we had earlier.
Which we had earlier, so when you go through the drive-through, it's telling you to choose from one, two, three.
Which I continue to think are not signs.
Correct. They are.
So, I'm familiar with the site these would be visible from, I believe it's Des Moines Street.
Yeah. Yeah, if we'd just written this ordinance a little stronger with distances from public right-of-ways or neighboring properties, we might've had a balance. Catherine, now, you've showed these A/B signs that look a heck of a lot smaller than the existing signs, so are they gonna have less square footage of signage with what they wanna do? Those look pretty big. This A and B looks pretty small, and maybe I'll have the applicant discuss that, but...
Yeah, I think maybe the applicant could better answer that.
Yeah, because the color picture above is the actual location, correct?
That is the actual location, correct.
Whereas this A and B are these are like, yeah, kinda what they'll look like things. Yeah, I'd like to have a better idea of the size and scope of what the signage will be. And again, the applicant may be able to help us with that.
And they're listed on the agenda as well.
Okay, 'cause yeah, this is like, what, six, is that a six-foot tall? Those ones in the picture look...
Two of them are two or four.
Yeah, that A and B looks pretty small.
So, two of them would be four-point-two foot tall by four-point-eight-three foot wide.
Again, those are... But on a base.
Right, but even so, they're less than six-foot tall, probably, those signs there look like they're eight to ten-foot. And again, I don't wanna belabor the point, I'll ask the applicant to fill us in there. I can't quite see.
Yeah, it's hard to read, but it's just at five-eleven and a half.
So they're under six-foot tall.
I would think this would be pretty similar to the signs that we've approved before for other McDonald's, 'cause I think it's all has to do with branding.
Yeah, what we ended up, and...
We did it on, because we did it on FLUR, too.
Yeah, I know at FLUR, we did ask for some extra landscaping around the signs, but we allowed them.
Yeah, and I think part of the problem, they couldn't do pedestals, because they aren't signs. Two, there was electronic access that they needed.
It was tight.
We had the same thing on Merle Hay Road.
Yep.
At some places.
All right, so just trying to get a feel for the scope of the signage, based on your pictures there. Okay, that's all I got, anybody else? All right, thanks. Just 'cause Bert's scaring you off there, you could stay. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant? Thank you for your patience and waiting, I hope you're getting paid by the hour, not by the job.
Oh, no, I'm charging the company, so...
That's okay.
Sorry, so, first time here, so, kind of a, a little bit of entertaining, a little bit, so, and then, just so you guys know, there'll be two more sites after this that I'll be representing as well, so. My name's Nick Koenig, work with Fast Signs, we're located at seventeen ninety-one Northwest Eighty-Six Street in Clive, five oh three two five. I'm here representing McDonald's, they're working with a company that's basically putting all these in. I'll basically just read what I have here, so, at this location, we are looking to swap out the current drive-through menu boards with LED panel menu boards, under city code, these are considered monument-style signs, which would need a masonry base, currently the base that holds the signs is steel column that matches the color of the panels and has wiring components running up, and are housed inside of it to operate the panels. The panels also have ventilation areas along the bottom of the panels. Putting the panels on a solid masonry base would hurt the ventilation of the unit and also make it very difficult or impossible to access wiring and components that are housed inside the steel column. For maintenance or work that may need to be done to them in the future, that's why we're asking for a variance on this. And then, just to note, you guys have already said that, but you've already gave variances to three-two-seven-five Euclid Avenue, two-five-four-zero East University Avenue, sixty-one-twenty-five Grand Avenue, and forty-two-oh-one FLUR, and I have pictures of those, too, if you wanna see them. Same layout and everything, same, same signs.
And Nate, is it?
Nick.
Nick, sorry. So Nick, with what I see in the picture, the current signage that's there versus what you're gonna put in, you're actually gonna make the signs smaller then, aren't you?
They're gonna be smaller, all three locations, well, this location, they're both, they're all dual lanes, so they'll have the small pre-brows. So basically, the bigger ones are just double the pre-brows, so the pre-brows is one panel, and the ones when you go up to order are two panels. So, and the LED lights will actually be not as bright as the current lighting that are in the signs now, so it'll be dimmer at night as well, which is, which is nice, so. The property owners also wanted me to tell you guys that they are gonna be doing landscaping after they are installed, to make it look better and everything like that, but, I mean, from all the, we've already done three locations now for this company, and like I said, I went around, looked at them, and they, they look sleek and clean, and they look, they look really nice, they look a lot nicer than the ones that are up there now, so.
Will the yellow kinda covered flyover canopy still remain there?
Yes, yep, it'll just be the, basically, the signs are going actually right where the old ones are now.
Other ones were, gotcha.
So.
All right, okay. Any other questions for Nick? All right, off to an okay start here, okay, anybody here to speak in support? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? None? Okay, we'll close public portion, go to board deliberation.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Hey Bert, do you have the backup that we've done for all these other locations? Usually you are, you're the voice scout of this team.
Yeah, we, we didn't bring one today, but...
Who could've guessed that we would?
If I wrote it, maybe I would've.
Hey, you put some digs in on him today.
It's okay, you can give him his knife back after the meeting.
Was it, yeah.
But do you think you could cover that for how we previously ruled on these? Because to me, this is no different, I agree with Nathan and my John here on my left, and I think most of us understand, these are not signs, we've approved this before.
I've seen them up.
Yeah, I guess the two conditions I'd recommend are, one, signs are in accordance with the drawings presented, and two, they're installed by a licensed sign contractor in accordance with the sign permit.
What she put in there, the numbers two and three, right?
Regardless, yeah.
I'm standing up for her, on the record.
Yeah, okay, so I, okay, so, I'm good with that, so, to not belabor this point, I'm gonna make a motion, because everybody knows I'm the sign guy. I'm slowly converting others, but I just make a motion that we let them put the signs up for the requirements that Bert just mentioned, and I'm gonna make the same motion on the next one, so I'll let everybody know that, too.
And is your reasoning, they're not gonna have any detrimental impact, actually lessen the amount of signage currently there?
Yeah.
They're giving you all these...
He's done it before.
You just say common sense in today's society?
You'll be okay?
Yeah, we've approved this before, so we've got history.
That probably won't work with legal.
Based on past...
We've got history here.
I've been to the FLUR Drive and the Euclid Drive, we're supposed to put new signs on.
And the applicant plans to install additional landscaping?
Exactly, and that's in there, too, and I'm assuming that staff's got that included, so.
So that's clear enough, Glenna, that's Dave's motion, was there a second?
But what you want, then, to approve the staff recommendation?
No, it's not.
Staff wants to...
Staff, staff still wants a monument base.
Yeah, no.
They're willing to give a little, but they still want a monument base.
He wants to approve all of the variances requested.
To let them build it as they've proposed.
Exactly, as we've approved before.
With a licensed sign contractor and meet the other requirements of the zoning ordinance for operation and size.
Landscaping and all that.
Right, so that's your motion.
As we've stated in the past with this company.
Yes, I'll second.
Good job, John, okay, all right. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. I'm gonna say yes, too, it doesn't mean I'm a convert, Dave, but in this case...
No.
So, motion carries six-zero, they're gonna be smaller, and they're gonna do some other nice landscaping, so. Okay, so that brings us to item twenty, a variance request at seven-ten Army Post Road. Deja vu.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as alluded previously, this will be a very similar request. I believe the vast majority of details are the same, so for brevity's sake, I will just identify the location that we'll be talking about at seven-ten Army Post Road. If you've had it anywhere down Southwest Ninth or along Army Post Road, you've probably seen this, site photo, this is Dickman Road, apologies, so Dickman Road runs back here along the rear portion of the property, the...
This is a little different, 'cause it's probably Mel's McDonald's, I would imagine, given its location.
It definitely is.
So Mel knows it well, then, he could probably explain even better than me. Enchances are located here.
Gets her coffee there every morning.
She can make the motion.
The drive-throughs are double-loaded again and located at the rear of the property, close to Dickman Road, and then you come around onto the east side of the property for payment and pickup. They provided us with the same proposed images and information, so you'll see that, it's very similar, and then our consent map was just one card in support, and I seem to have lost it in the folder somewhere, but they're in support, so.
That's Mr. Madonia's property, if I remember right, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
There are any questions I can attempt to answer this time around?
Staff's position remains the same, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, our conditions are the same as proposed last time, I'm actually going to show you just the same ones, again, we are recommending denial of the variance for the definition of the freestanding monument sign, and then recommending approval of the request for the additional three signs over the one allowed. The three conditions that I had presented would be that they have the monument base, licensed sign contractor, and then the electronic display sign shall meet our zoning ordinance for operation and size, so you can remember what was said before to kind of update those in your mind if you're going the same way. If there are any questions, I can answer for you.
Each case is different.
We're not gonna ask Bert any questions, just...
All right, any questions for Catherine?
So he won't insult you again.
All right, no questions.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's it, I'm calling maintenance, okay. Applicant or representative of the applicant, Nick, you can come back up, make it as quick as you want.
Do I have to say my name and everything again?
Yes.
I do, okay. Nick Koenig, work at Fast Signs, seventeen ninety-one Northwest Eighty-Six Street, Clive, Iowa, five zero three two five. Again, like I said before, just with the wiring and the housing and everything, it's gonna make it difficult to work on and do maintenance on, and with ventilation and everything, so, with the signs.
Okay, and Nick, at this location, there is some additional landscaping to the south of the drive-through lane, if I remember right, between there and Dickman with shrubs and some more trees, there's a little more landscaping here than at, even at that last location on East Des Moines Street, right?
Correct, there's a little bit more, 'cause I actually went out and did a survey on this McDonald's, and I guess I didn't even realize there was a street running behind there, so there is some kind of foliage blocking that area and stuff.
Okay, any questions for Nick? All right, anybody here to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody speaking opposition? Seeing none, any further questions for staff? None, we'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation. I'm not gonna make the motion.
Oh, come on, I'll make the motion again, then.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, same reasoning as before?
Same condition, same reasoning, yes.
Is that good enough for the record, Glenna?
Yes.
As far as the reasoning, yeah, each item is a separate item...
Okay, I know, I get that.
...for intent discussion and everything, but in general, it won't hurt the character of the neighborhood, the signs will actually be smaller, and we have existing landscaping buffers, right?
And the character of the neighborhood, the nice buildings just to the south there, the old Fort Des Moines.
Who owns those? Yeah. He's right downstairs from here. Okay, so that's your reasoning, is there a second? Was there a second, John?
Yes.
Okay, all right, got a motion and a second for approval of the requested variances. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, motion carries six-zero. Okay, that'll bring us to item twenty-one, three thousand and two Forest Avenue, a variance request. 3002 Forest Avenue, a variance request.
And Mr. Chair, members of the board, as once again, very similar request. Located up in the Drake neighborhood, very close, just actually across the street from Drake University. They are looking for very similar signs as shown before, and then here are just some street views. This is located from, must be 29th Street. I'm trying to remember the street's jog there. Just zoomed in a little bit closer so you can see it, and then this would be from 30th Street. Sorry, that was 31st Street. This is 30th Street. Is the view where you can see the signs. Looks like I mixed up the cards. So these are actually the cards for the last one. We did not receive any cards or comments for this particular one, and staff is recommending the same situation, where we are recommending denial of the variance to the definition of the freestanding monument sign, and recommending approval of the additional requested signs over the one allowed, with the same previously stated conditions about having a monument base installation and then display, electronic display meeting the zoning ordinance. Are there any questions that I can attempt to ask or answer?
Anyone? Okay, nicely done, thank you. Okay, applicant or representative of the applicant?
Nick Koenigs, working with Fast Signs, address there 1791 Northwest 86th Street, Clive, Iowa 50325. As I said the last two times, we're looking for this variance just because of the wiring and the components that are housed within the within the base that runs up, and just making it harder for maintenance, and obviously the ventilation of the panels as well, that run along the bottom, it would hurt that as well, so...
And again, in this case, the signs generally would be smaller than the existing ones, is that correct?
Yeah, just by looking at that view. I mean, this one right here, I mean, they're gonna be way smaller.
Yeah.
And they're black as well, so-
And they're not gonna have those toppers on them, those extra fascia panels on top like they got there?
Nope.
Yeah.
So exactly what you guys have seen from the examples.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be way less of an eyesore, if any.
Got you. Okay. Alright, any questions for Nick otherwise? Okay, thank you. Alright, anybody here to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none. Any further questions for staff? Don't see any. Close the public portion, board deliberation.
Can I go for the trifecta?
Sure, Dave. Give you a reasoning.
Same reasoning as I've given the last two.
I will say for the record, it's anybody with children going through these, these are more directional, make it easier ordering, quicker, efficient, and it's a really clean look.
Okay, less obtrusive.
Absolutely.
So I-
Let your second get it.
I'd have the same, I'd have the same conditions. Is that okay, Glenna?
Yes.
Yep. Alright, so we got a motion, second, same conditions as the last two we had. If that's clear enough, all those in favor of granting the requested variance, subject to those three conditions, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six-zero. Okay, Nick, you've earned your money for today. Keep up the good work. Alright, you bet. Staff will get those approvals to you next week. Sure. Alright, that brings us to item 22, a conditional use permit and variance request for the Des Moines Water Works at 2201 George Flag Parkway.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the conditional use permit would allow for the sale of alcohol at the new concert venue that's been constructed within the eastern portion of Water Works Park. Unfortunately, this type of use requires 150 feet of separation from any park, while it's located within a park, so right there that disqualifies it, so it needs a variance in addition to the conditional use permit. I'm sure you're all familiar with the amphitheater. It was built in accordance with some appeals that the board had granted back in March of 2017. Here's a sketch that they submitted that shows the stage here with the amphitheater. Located, again, just a point of reference, here's Fluor Drive. The lilac trees and other flowers are in this area here, and there's the internal road here, so it's located in this open space area, in that portion of the park. There's some photos. You can barely see the amphitheater stage in that photo. Zoomed in.
Are these from within the park itself?
Yeah, these are from within the park.
How'd you pull that off? Because usually they take the picture, oh, public park, okay. Usually they're from the public right of-
And then the consent map, we had a few cards in support from the southern perimeter. As you know, staff's always reluctant to approve or recommend approval of variances to separation distances, just because the test for variances is so stringent. So we have recommended denial, however, to appease Dave, if you turn to page 94, there's the list of conditions that we would recommend if the board is so inclined to-
He just quickly puts them on.
Thank you, Bert, for that acknowledgement. It's good work.
So what's the difference here when they've had festivals for, I can't remember the names, that have gone on for years?
Oh, the country festival.
Country Bash.
Because this is more of a permanent use. I can let Sue Ann explain it, she can explain it better than me, but because this is more of a permanent use, and it's not, I think it's just to avoid the five days all the time.
It's not tied to a specific event.
Temporary ones are approved.
Yeah, otherwise they're having to do five-day temporary permits, and this, we just allow them to get one, permanent one.
This is the brand-new amphitheater that's been advertised with the grand-
Right, yeah, I think the Clint Black concert would've been there this past weekend.
It was supposed to be last weekend, yeah.
Okay. And in general, this is alcohol sales. We're not talking about having concerts and the general loudness of it.
Right, yeah, that's permitted.
Because all of that was previously permitted and approved and adjudicated and dealt with, right? Yeah, okay, so they're allowed to have concerts or however many they want already?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, clear enough. Alright, thank you. Any questions for Bert? Everything good? Okay. Alright, applicant or representative of the applicant. It's gotta be the people who are left in the room. There's no choices. I'm not sure you're getting paid by the hour.
I'm not.
No. It's by the job.
Such is life, though, right?
Yeah.
My name's Sam Carroll. I live at 4340 Allison Avenue, and I serve as the executive director of the Des Moines Water Works Park Foundation. As you know, and as they've stated, we've done our five-day, we've pulled our five-day license and gone through that approval process at the encouragement of Sue Ann and the office. They asked us to do a continuous use permit. I understand the reason, the 150 feet. Of course, we're inside a public park, and it's a unique park, and it's not part of the public park system, but by way of a public utility owning it. So we appreciate that. We can't change the location, obviously, but we would point out that there's some consistencies of what you've granted. Similar variances for Brenton, and similar use for Brenton Skating, Simon Estes, and our work would be consistent, obviously, with that. If you did grant the variance, we are in total agreement with the conditions that they set forth, and so we would just ask for you to grant the variance and the continuing use permit, just so we didn't have to continue to come back with a five-day licensing.
Questions for Sam? Sam, I just wanna, just a, maybe the common sense question, so if you sell alcohol to people, they can't just go run around with it anywhere, can they?
No, we would follow the same fencing that you, that, in fact, we have partnered, obviously, with People's Productions that you're very familiar with, and First Fleet Concerts, because they do this with you, with inside that permitting all the time, and so each event would be based on, you know, the conditions set forth and responsible use.
So you keep everybody corralled, right? I mean, I've seen it in the smallest towns in Iowa. They have a little drinking corral, but basically, it'll be within the concert venue, in and right around the amphitheater.
Yeah, and if you went into the park today, you'd see the fencing that's already up for the Friday concert, and so you can see how those controls are put in place, et cetera.
So since you're only in front of us today, had the Clint Black concert happened, you wouldn't have been selling booze.
Yeah, well, actually, we had the five-day permit.
Ah, you had your five-day.
Those were pulled. As you know, the weather Friday, Mother Nature, we were ready, but Mother Nature was not. So at least we didn't have the Topeka experience with the Jason Alde concert, if you saw that. But we are ready for Friday and Brett Young, and hopefully great crowd.
Yep, I think everybody's thrilled. It's just awesome. You bet.
It's a fun project. Great for Des Moines.
Okay, oh, and Sam, just kinda for the record, you have plenty of separation, just visually, from other areas of the park, from neighborhoods, from Fluor Drive, so those consuming alcohol, there's no nearby residents?
Yeah, you know, part of our sound strategy, and we've gone through, obviously worked very closely to get that resolved as well, was to locate this amphitheater in the east portion of the park away from residences. I mean, we have the levee to the south, and of course, administration and industrial area to the north. You've got the actual Water Works production site, the river, the hill, and then, of course, it goes up into residence after that, but that's a pretty far, far-
I would imagine you have the concessionaires that handle big events, like for instance, the state fair. They know what they're doing. They've done this before.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, our partners, they're here if you needed to, for any clarifications, but they're, you know, the same folks that program your Simon Estes, and the people that they utilize for bringing in the concessionaires.
Okay, very good. Alright, thank you. Okay, well, we'll see here if there's anybody to speak in support for the applicant. You guys wanna speak in support? Okay. Have to. Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, sure. Sam, do you wanna come up, or are these guys here to speak in support?
Bring that smarter Sam with me.
Okay. Just introduce yourself.
Sam Summers, First Fleet Concerts. I live at 640 56th Street. My question here, and I think we have had some communication about five-day licenses. If this sort of action, if this board action was needed for those five-day licenses, or if we can continue just pulling those five-day licenses like we have been doing?
To pull five-day licenses?
Okay.
Yeah, alright, cool.
That's enough for me.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, excellent. Okay, alright. Seeing no others in support, nobody in opposition. Any further questions for staff? Don't see any. We'll close the public portion, go to board deliberation.
I would like to make a motion to approve and grant the variance and conditional use permit, based on the recommendations on page 94.
I will second that, because I wanna add in some of the reasoning that I think everybody would agree with, that in this case, we do have sufficient separation, not necessarily by feet, but by geography, landscaping, and neighboring uses, where this would not cause a detriment to the general character, nature, and well-being of the surrounding area.
I think you're taking a flood, a one-time flood zone-
Yeah.
And actually utilizing it into something that benefits the community.
Exactly.
Which I think is fabulous.
Okay, so that was motion and second to grant the conditional use permit and variance. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion carries six-zero. Okay, guys, you're good. Thanks for being patient today. Okay, the only business we have left then is to approve minutes from the last month. Those were sent out by Bert for everyone's review. Anybody who was here last month can make a motion and vote. There'll be a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
By John, second by Dave. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries six-zero. We were all here. Alright, this hearing is adjourned. Four and a half hours for 22 items, not bad.